Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. This is the El Monte Union High School District Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, we'll move to the agenda. Item A, Board of Trustees meeting, closed session, called to order at 5:01 PM. Dr. Zuniga, can you go ahead and take roll call?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Start off with Member Carlos Alcedo. Start off with Member Carlos Alcedo.
Present. Present.
Member Florencio Briones. Member Florencio Briones.
Present.
Present.
Member Qui Win. Member Qui Win.
Present.
Present.
Member Estela Torres Segres. Member Estela Torres Segres.
Present.
Present.
Member Ricardo Padilla. Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here. Here.
All present. All present.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent. At this time, we have our attorney, Mr. Adrian De León, from Olivares San Madruga Law Organization. At this time, we have our attorney, Mr. Adrian De León, from Olivares San Madruga Law Organization. Can you please read us into closed session? Attorney De León? Can you please read us into closed session? Attorney De León?
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. For closed session, we have item 2A. For closed session, we have item 2A. Government Code Section 54957 for Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Government Code Section 54957 for Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Two matters. Two matters. We have closed session item pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for EMUEA. We have closed session item pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for EMUEA. We have closed session item 2C pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for EMUEA, Adult Education, AE. We have closed session item 2C pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for EMUEA, Adult Education, AE. And finally, we have closed session item 2D pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for CSEA, Chapter 11. And finally, we have closed session item 2D pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiations for CSEA, Chapter 11. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Adrian De León from Olivares San Madruga Law Organization. Thank you, Attorney Adrian De León from Olivares San Madruga Law Organization. At this time, the board will go into closed session, and we will be back out at 6:00 PM. At this time, the board will go into closed session, and we will be back out at 6:00 PM.
This is the Almonte Union High School District Board of Education Trustee Regular Meeting. At this time, we are on Item B on the agenda, so I call this meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Dr. Zuniga, Superintendent, can you please give me a roll call?
Thank you, President Padilla. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. We'll start off with Member Carlos Alcedo.
Here.
Member Florencio Briones.
Present.
Member Qui Win.
Here.
Member Stella Torres de Seigres.
Present.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
And we have our student member, Sofia Hernandez.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Edwards Zuniga. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand to do a flag salute. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Just a reminder to my colleagues on the board and to our administration, please make sure that you talk into the mic, okay? Otherwise, I start getting texts that the people watching on the live stream can't hear our meeting. As you guys know, something that I do in honor of Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, she is my mentor. When Professor Stella Torres de Seigres speaks, I listen. You know, she has more education than I have in terms of my college degrees, and she has a lot more life experience than I have. And so it is for that reason that I have so much respect for her. And during the time that I've been president, one of the things that I follow is I always read a poem. And why do I read a poem? I read a poem because that's something that I picked up from her when she's been president, and I really liked what she did. And so again, tonight I have a poem, and this is all because of you, Professor Torres de Seigres. Thank you for the trustee that you are and for all that you do for our kids and for this district. And so tonight I have a poem that's by Joseph Rudyard Clipping, who was an English novelist, a short story writer, poet, and journalist. He was born in British India, which inspired much of his work. Kipling's work of fiction includes The Jungle Book, Duality, Kim, The Just Soul Stories, and many short stories, including The Man Who Would Be King. And he reads as follows: "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you; if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you but make allowances, make allowance for their doubting too; if you can wait and not be tired by waiting or being lied about, don't deal in lies; or being hated, don't give way to hating; and yet don't look too good or talk too wise; if you can dream and not make dreams your master; if you can think and not make thoughts your aim; if you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same; if you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken twisted by knaves to make a trap for fools; or watch the things you gave your life to broken and stoop and build them up with worn-out tools; if you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it on one turn of pitch and toss, and lose and start again at your beginnings, and never breathe a word about your loss; if you can force your heart and nerve and sinew, sinew, to serve your turn long after they're gone; and so hold on when there's nothing in you except the will which says to them, 'Hold on.' If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings, nor lose the common touch; if neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if all men count with you but none too much; if you can fill the unforgiving minute with sixty seconds' worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it; and, which is more, you'll be a man, my son." Again, this is Rudyard Clipping. And so in your honor, Professor Torres de Seigres, I will continue to read a poem. After all, we are in ALIA, which is a local educational agency. This is an educational institution, and I think it's very fitting. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, November 1st, 2023?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by board member Florencio Briones. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by board member Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor say aye.
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 The agenda is approved 5-0. Item number B2, B as in Berry, 2. Consider approval of Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for October 4th, 2023 regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor by board member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor say aye.
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 The minutes for October 4th, 2023 are approved. Item B3, consider approval of Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for October 18th, 2023 special board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by board member Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes for October 18th, 2023. Okay, make that a 4-0-1. Board member Carlos Alcedo is abstaining. Item B4, recognition of 2024 Rose Parade Queen and Royal Court finalist. Dr. Edwards Zuniga, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, President Padilla. It is our honor to recognize one of our students from Rosemead High School, and I did confirm she was going to be here, but hopefully she's running a little late, and we can recognize her if she does show up. But I'm going to go ahead and introduce the recognition itself. If you recall, over a month ago, we were informed that Vidi Diana Sanchez, a senior at Rosemead High School, put her name in to be part of something that we all know and see every day on January 1st, the Rose Parade, correct? As part of the Rose Parade Court is a royal court. Typically, what you have is you have a committee who goes around, and they will recruit students to apply for the court to participate. There's a long, lengthy process. There's a lot of competition. Their selection is within the Sangiovesa Valley area, including the area that covers Rosemead High School and other areas surrounding Pasadena. And I don't recall a time where one of our students actually made it to a finalist selection of a royal court. And that's not only prestigious, but something that demonstrates that our students are not only capable, but they have the desire and the want to, you know, to represent their community, but also demonstrate their skill level, too. It does require interview. It does require, it's not only a beauty pageant, obviously, but it requires an interview process, a talent that they participate in. So there's a selection criteria, and Vidi Diana was one of 28 finalists for the 2024 Rose Parade Queen and Royal Court. And as I'm speaking, I'm going to actually introduce our student. You know, pleasant, warm welcome to Vidi Diana. You know, pleasant, warm welcome to Vidi Diana. Welcome, Vidi Diana. And we're talking about you. So we're excited and we're happy to hear the news that we heard about a month ago. And you're, not only your passion for representing your community, but also really historical for our school communities that we don't see this often. And we were talking about, we don't recall the time where there was someone in that position that you're in now, too. So congratulations to you. I know that you're not only an outstanding student and a stellar student at Rosemead High School, both academically and also, I understand, athletically. Because when I walked into a classroom to invite you, you had a, I think you had a black eye. And I heard the story about competition and you competing, but you were there. You were in class, smiling, and moving on. So I really am impressed by you and also just your demeanor, your composure, and just the way you represent your school, too, and your community. So we're very excited that you made it this far. We know, unfortunately, that there's, you know, out of the twenty-eight, they have to select, you know, obviously, the top. I believe there's eight. I'm not, I'm not sure on that one. But nevertheless, you have a lot to be proud of, not only yourself, but your family, and also all of us here at Almani Union High School District, too. Okay? So we'd like to present you with the certificate. The Board of Trustees will be recognizing you at this time. And if you could just say maybe a little bit about what you do at Rosemead High School Club Organization, you know, maybe talk about your experience, because I think it's good to share with others that potentially, you know, might want to be interested, but maybe timid or unsure about what the process is, too. Because we're also excited to hear about that, too. So I'd like to welcome you to the mic. I'm gonna hand it over to our president of the board, Mr. Padilla, and then we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, colleagues, if you could, you guys could join me down at the bottom, and that would be pretty awesome. Come on over here. Come on over here. Come right here. All right, well, tonight, we're gonna give a certificate of recognition, and the certificate reads as follows. This certificate of recognition is presented to Vidi Diana Sanchez, who is a Rosemead High School student. And this honor is very important to me in that I, too, am a Rosemead Panther. You know, it's a Panther night. That's right. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present you with this certificate, and it reads as follows: Vidi Diana Sanchez, Rosemead High School, for being selected as a finalist to the two thousand twenty-four Rose Parade Queen and Royal Court. Your academic achievements and community involvement are to be commended. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. And it's signed by myself, Board President of the Almani Union High School District, my Vice President, Professor Stella Torres de Segres, our clerk, Mr. Qui Win, and also Board Member Mr. Carlos Alcedo, and my colleague, Mr. Florencio Briones. And also, well, it's not signed by her, but she's also gonna say some words. Our student trustee, who's also from Rosemead High School, and then our superintendent. So I'll go ahead and just tell you that it makes me very proud to have you here. And I told Dr. Zuniga, I want to recognize Vidi Diana. I know that I saw an article about you that was written. And it's important that we not only just recognize academics, but that we also recognize all of the other things, the community involvement activities that our students do that go way beyond Rosemead High School, and that's what makes our students so great. And también voy a hablar poquito en español. Tu mamá está aquí, yo la conozco de muchos años, y le quiero felicitar a usted por tener una hija tan exitosa, muy fuerte académicamente y en los programas en la comunidad. Y yo sé que usted siempre ha estado involucrada en todos los programas en la escuela. Mom has always been very involved with the schools, even when in the primary grades in the elementary district, mom was always there. So I know that parents always judge themselves by how their kids turn out. Well, you should feel very proud. Yo sé que los padres siempre se miden qué tan buenos de padres son por como salen los niños. Entonces eso le contesta a usted que ha hecho un excelente trabajo en querer a su niña y asegurar que ella tenga mucho éxito aquí y continúe eso. De parte de mí, como presidente de la mesa directiva, es un orgullo tener a su hija Vidi Diana en una preparatoria como la que es de Rosemead High School, donde yo también en un tiempo fue un alumno ahí. So felicidades a usted y felicidades a su niña y a toda su familia. Y voy a dejar que mis colegas también digan unas cuantas palabras. I'm gonna allow my colleagues to also share some words. But this is the certificate that we're presenting you with. So felicidades, congratulations. And you're also gonna get this lapel pin. This is a lapel pin that we all wear of our school district. También les vamos a dar un brochecito y un certificado. Y este mismo brochecito es el brochecito que usamos nosotros como funcionarios públicos y es algo muy especial. It's a very special pin for you. There you go.
Vidi Diana, congratulations. I know that for getting into the place that you got was hard. Not only, not only that you had to do a lot of talking with people, also your grace, the way that you, your grace in the school, the way that you had to participate in the competition. That was really hard, and we are so proud, so proud that you got to be one of the finalists. Thank you so much. Muchas felicidades, señora. La felicito por su niña. Lo que el trabajo que hizo estuvo muy difícil, muy duro, pero lo logró. Y nos representó lo más importante, representarse al Monte Union High School District a través de Rosemead High School. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Vidi Diana. You know, I'm from Rosemead, and my children graduate from Rosemead High School. Rosemead High School always in my heart. And you're the star of Rosemead, and you shine very bright. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to mom for having a wonderful daughter in our school district, and good luck to you.
Like my colleagues have said, just congratulations. We always try to recognize our students for all of their accolades and thank them for representing our school district so well. Especially, this isn't just a local level. We know the Rose Parade is viewed all around the world, not even nationwide, all around the world. So to be part of that is very exciting, and to know that you are part of our school district gives us a very proud feeling. So thank you so much. Felicidades, señora. Me imagino el orgullo, ¿verdad? Que usted siente por su hija, so felicidades.
Congratulations, Vidi Diana. When I saw the article in the Tribune about you being a finalist, I jumped out of my seat. I was in my office at home, and I grabbed the article from the website and I sent it to Dr. Zuniga. I said, hey, check this out, because as Dr. Zuniga shared, I've never seen anybody from Rosemead or Arroyo. Those are the two schools from the Almani Union High School District where you can apply to be on the royal court, because they're within the P C C area. So I was really excited, and I was rooting for you, and I'm happy that you're a finalist. I'm bummed that you didn't make it onto the court, but I was super excited to know that you went out. You put yourself out there. You know, you were amongst dozens of other young women, and it's something to hold your head high, to be very proud of, because that is a significant accomplishment. I hope that your experience was not only positive, but just very uplifting. I've been to Wrigley House there, and it's a beautiful facility, and I'm sure you spent some time there as well. And, you know, I just wish you the best on everything else that you're gonna do, and you're gonna continue to represent our schools and our school district, and more importantly, our community wherever you go. Being that you're a senior, not that I want to put you on the spot, but have you given any thought to where you're gonna go to school after you graduate Rosemead? No? Not quite yet. Okay, I'll leave it at that. I won't, I won't ask any more questions. But just know that we're all incredibly proud of you for this accomplishment, and we wish you the best in everything that you do in your future. And as has been shared with mom, felicidades. Debe tener tremendo orgullo para su hija, como nosotros también tenemos ese mismo orgullo para ella. So felicidades a usted. Congratulations to you, and we wish you the best.
I'm so proud of you. I mean, I've known you for so long, so to see you accomplish this is like, it's crazy. I remember reading the article for the very first time, and I was like, oh, my gosh. We're talking about it, we're like, we're so proud of her. Like, I'm, I was so happy. I was even talking about it with my mom, because she saw, too. She's like, oh, my gosh, like, it's so special to have someone from our community, because that's so rare. And like, regardless of the end outcome, like, the fact that you got so far is something that I feel, I hope you're really proud of, because that's crazy. So congratulations.
I just echo the same. I mean, you heard me up there, and I just wanted to be sure that you feel special today, because it's not often these certificates are from our Board of Trustees, and hopefully that's just a reminder that we're here to support you as a district, though we don't see each other every day. We're excited when students succeed, that the community is successful. Okay? So, Mr. Padilla, I'll hand it over to you, but maybe she can share about what she does now. Absolutely. So we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to Vidi Diana. You can say a few words, introduce your mom. Just, you know, what are you involved with, or how did you get on?
So like, for the longest time, we've been going to the Rose Parade, and that one flow with the queens just automatically just caught my attention. I was like, oh, my gosh, I want to do that. And then, what a coincidence, they came to our school, and I was like, okay, this is my shot. And I was like, I think my mom knew how, I was like, I don't want to do that. That's scary. But I was like, you know what? It's something different. It's like, this is the chance to do something different. I was like, you know what? Let's just do it. And it was a long month. It was every Saturday with anticipation, and did I make it to the next round? So it was a lot. It was nerve-wracking. I really burst in my bubble doing that, because I'm not the one to do those things. But I didn't make it on the court, but just making it to the finalists. There was six hundred and fifty girls in total, and I was the last twenty-eight. Like, it's not the seven, but I was the last twenty-eight, and it means a lot. Yeah.
You wanna, what is your mom's name? Introduce your mom.
It's my mommy. Her name is Elvira. She's the most amazing mom. Yeah. She supported me the whole way. She was even there when I said, I don't want to do it anymore. She was there like, yeah, you have, it's you, Vidi. It's calling for you, and I'm most grateful for her, and she knows that. And I'm gonna cry.
Good, good, good. So what we're gonna do right now, lo que vamos a hacer es vamos a tomar una foto, and one with the board, and then we'll kick the board out. Okay? So let's get into formation with the board. También, si quiere pasar para tomar una foto, por favor. Okay, board, colleagues, just go ahead and stay down here. I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda as soon as I find my glasses. Does anybody see my glasses? Okay, so the next item on the agenda, Dr. Edwards Zuniga, Superintendent, we have recognition of Ms. Cynthia Velasco. Is Cynthia Velasco here? She is not.
I believe so.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item B six. This is recognition of Mr. Wyatt Rainier. He is the president of the Almani Police Officers Association. Dr. Edwards Zuniga?
Thank you, President Padilla. Again, it gives me great pleasure to welcome all of you to our Board of Trustees. As part of our recognition, we not only celebrate also our students, but also community and those who impact our community every day. And one of the things that we are celebrating tonight is the relationship that we have with our local law enforcement agency, which is called the Almani Police Department. Through the work of the Almani Police Department, I believe the relationship within our district has been over twenty years, if I'm not mistaken. And part of that relationship is having the opportunity to work alongside school resource officers on campuses. Every day that kids are on campus, our school resource officers are there to not only serve our students, but also protect the community, too. And it's a valuable experience for the school resource officer, but also it takes good leadership to ensure that the program runs efficiently and with efficacy, and also serves the community's purpose as well. So I'd like to, again, welcome the following two individuals. We're gonna start off with the Police Officers Association President again. And as Mr. Padilla mentioned, Mr. Rainier is not only part of the organization, but he's a leader in that organization. And through challenging times, he's demonstrated that leadership by working collaboratively with the chief alongside the collective bargaining agreement to ensure that, moving forward, we do have, we continue our program on campuses, not only at our high schools, but also at our elementary school districts, which we include Mountview School District and Almani City School District, too. And that took the work of all of us to have a good dialogue, to allow the process for our chief and also the police officer to work together to ensure that the needs of our students within our community and our parents' wishes, and also our leaders on campuses, are not only provided, but also worked through. And so we're very blessed to have that partnership, and this opportunity is for us to recognize that it doesn't go unnoticed that the work that is happening to continue our program is as a result of these gentlemen here that are here with us this evening. So I'd like to bring Mr. Rainier, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here with us. So tonight, I'd like to present a certificate of recognition to Mr. Wyatt Rainier. Again, he's the Almani Police Officers Association President. Mr. Wyatt Rainier, president of E M P O A, or the P O A. In appreciation for your partnership in supporting and prioritizing school safety through collaboration to meet the needs of our students and schools. Safety is the number-one priority, whether you're a school district or whether you're the city. That is the number-one priority that we owe it to our residents and we owe it to our students. We can have many programs. We can have the best curriculum and instruction, but all of that stuff does not matter if our students are not safe. And so it gives me great pride in presenting this certificate to Mr. Rainier, specifically because in this district, we have always been very supportive of the S R O program, better known as a school resource officer, that has been in existence, if I'm not mistaken, since nineteen ninety-six. Dr. Edwards Zuniga? And that is our commitment to our students and to the parents in letting them know that safety will always be the number-one priority for the Almani Union High School District. I know that my colleagues here on the board have always been supportive of safety. That puts us on the right side of history. I know that there have been some districts in the surrounding areas that had made the foolish decision to end their S R O program. And once they have done that, they quickly realize all that the school resource officer program does. And I want to personally thank President Wyatt Rainier. And the reason that I want to thank him is many of the police officers work twelve-hour shifts. Well, for us, our kids, that will not work. We don't need a police officer for twelve hours on our high school campus. We need a police officer for eight hours is what would work for us. And so we went to the police department, to the city council. to the City Council, to the chief that we'll get to in a little bit. But Mr. President Rehneer talked to his collective bargaining members or all of the police officers and said, "Hey, guys, the school district is asking if we could change the job description for a School Resource Officer and allow those officers to work just eight hours instead of the 12 hours." And it moved forward favorably and they said, "Yes, absolutely. We wanna, we wanna work in collaboration with the high school district. We want to meet their needs." And so, for that, I am forever grateful for your flexibility and for your commitment to our most vulnerable stakeholders or residents, which are our children and our future. So, in appreciation for your partnership in supporting and prioritizing school safety through collaboration to meet the needs of our students and schools, congratulations from the Almani Union High School District, and it's signed by the entire board. Thank you, President Wyatt Rehneer. He too gets the certificate and just like our student, also gets our lapel pin. And I'll allow my colleagues to share a few words to express their joy and gratitude for the work that President Rehneer does.
President Rehneer, thank you so much for helping us. You don't know, the Board of Trustees, we are very worried about our students, even when sometimes people don't believe it, but the students are for us very important. And when I heard that you were going to help us in that way, you really, really, really gave us one of the most important presents, one of the most important things that we need for our school. Our school district needs you. Our school district has really good students, but always there are some problems. And with the great help that you are giving to us, you are going to help us to keep it up with our good job. Thank you so much. We congratulate you for being such a wonderful person. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President Rehneer. You know, law enforcement always a special place in my heart. I always respect law and order and without you, especially in the school district environment, without you, nothing going to work. And, you know, we are deeply grateful of your service and we hope we continue that success and that cooperation. And, you know, please accept our gratitude to your service. Thank you very much.
So, yeah, we had, at least I had a lot of questions coming into this year as far as, you know, is this agreement gonna get, you know, finalized? Where are we at? Had a lot of questions for Dr. Zuniga. But I'm very thankful that everyone agreed to it. It keeps our students safe. It keeps our community safe. Since I've been on the board since 2001, I can't think back and think of a negative experience or an SRO that we didn't agree with back from, geez, I'm gonna say Larry Fry and Mondo Santana and Officer Jack Jenkins and, I mean, you know, from the elementary, from Quintana Singletary, Arigui and Mikey Paredes. I mean, all these people, what they have in common is they have heart and they have the love for our community. And the fact that so many of them are from our community makes even a bigger difference. So, with all that history behind it, I'm so glad that we came to an agreement and that this program is continuing forward. So, thank you so much.
I wanna offer my gratitude to you and to the officers within the association for your flexibility. As was shared, you know, the ability for us to serve our students is number-one priority and for you to be so flexible because those schedules usually are not flexible, you know? And we wanna make sure that we serve our students while also make sure, making sure that the officers are able to serve the department's needs as well. So, having that flexibility and that partnership with the Police Officers Association, the Police Department as well, it means a lot to us, you know? And having worked with several of the SROs over the years as a classified employee here, you know, starting with Officer Jack back in the early 2000s, my colleague just shared, you know, somebody who knew the community very well, was well-respected in the community and, you know, was very, thought very highly of, you know? It's nice to know that you work with those same individuals and the level of service that you provide to the community means a great deal to me and my colleagues. So, thank you so much. Congratulations on your recognition today.
Yeah, I do really appreciate your contribution. I know how important it is to have someone there on campus, you know, if something happens or to prevent something from happening 'cause it can, you know, steer away the conflicts and everything, especially in today's society, which is really, you know, shaky. But, yeah, just thank you. It's really important.
Thank you. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and give the mic to President Rehneer to share some words.
Thank you so much for the recognition. It's much appreciated. I'd like to turn it back on you and thank you and commend you and applaud you for your leadership. Serving on my board, you know, we don't always see eye-to-eye on every issue and there's disagreements. But when it came to this issue, the safety and security of the students in our schools, that's unanimously, my board was behind that. And my board and the men and women that serve our department are behind you and support you to the fullest. So, yeah, it's some scheduling adjustments, but what's the priority? The priority is the safety and security of our students. So, again, thank you very much. I'm humbled and thankful for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rehneer. So, at this time, if we could all get together and get a picture with President Rehneer? Okay, so, moving right along, we're gonna go ahead and go on to the next item on the agenda. Last, but definitely not least, of equal gratitude and equal importance, we have, we are on item B as in boy seven, recognition of Almani Police Chief, Mr. Jake Fisher. And that's Fisher without a C, Mr. Padilla. I kept putting a C in there, Chief Fisher. So, welcome. If you can go ahead and come on up here and I'll turn this over to our Superintendent, Dr. Edward Zuniga, to share a few words.
Thank you, President Padilla. You know, they say that a person's leadership is demonstrated not only during normal times or even the good times, but most challenging times is what demonstrates leadership. And when I think of that, I think of our chief here, Chief Fisher. As you know, the Almani Police Department family has gone through some hard times relating to the loss of not only Chief Lowry, but also loss of our officers. And through that time, the chief has demonstrated what it is to be a leader in that capacity. And I know we're here to recognize the collaboration and the partnership that we have with our Police Department and its leadership. But I do wanna be clear about the person behind the scenes and is just not only a humble person, but a hard-working and dedicated chief. In the time that I've been here alongside working with the past three Chief of Polices for the city of Almani, I just can't say enough about his, just not only respect, to demonstrated every day, every time we do meet through the hard times. And we do have some times where we're, you know, we're pushing and we're challenging to get what we can get for students on campuses. And he also has to provide that opportunity to meet with the police officers association and also meet with the superintendent. So, I know we're very challenging when it comes to the superintendents and we push a lot of buttons. Just know that we do appreciate your patience and also your response to and has demonstrated every time we met you. Just a class act. And again, the honor tonight is for the leadership that he's demonstrated through the process of having a new agreement for the 23-24 school year and to retain our police officer relationship with our schools through our school resource officer. Moving forward, I know that the city, in collaboration with school leaders, board members, that we hope that that partnership continues. There's been financial challenges that many of our school districts have made the decision to not have the SRO, but our Board of Trustees has a deep priority for the safety of our students alongside myself, the superintendent, and also all of our principals too. And in that essence, having a new agreement with an opportunity to see an officer on campus every day is gonna greatly benefit not only the schools, but our community. So, chief, congratulations on this recognition. It's well-deserved and thank you again for being here.
And yes, I do wanna go ahead and read this about Chief Fisher. And the Almani Police Chief Jake Fisher joined the Almani Police Department in 1999, following in the footsteps of his father Rex, who served as a detective for Almani Police Department. Chief Fisher was assigned to serve in various capacities over the years, which included patrol officer, field training officer, detective, specializing in child sex crime investigations, polygraph examiner, and firearms instructor. Chief Fisher holds 18 years of experience with the city's special weapons and tactics, better known as SWAT, unit as an operator, a sniper, and commander. He previously served as a corporal, a sergeant, and a lieutenant of the patrol and investigations and captain of the field services division. Chief Fisher is a trusted member of the Almani community as a lifelong employee and San Gabriel Valley native. He graduated from Glendora High School in 1993. And, you know, this is a local educational agency, so we wanted to know about the degrees. He has a lot of degrees. He earned a bachelor's degree from Murray State University in Kentucky in 1998. In 2019, Chief Fisher earned a master's degree in public administration from the University of Laverne. Very, very accomplished, very amazing biography, resume, and it makes me feel very confident in your leadership with the academics and the life experience in the profession that you do. And so, that in itself is impressive. But also impressive is the fact that you, together with the Almani Police Officers Association, work together in collaboration. And in education, we always talk about collaboration. We talk about creativity, communication. We've done all those things between the POA with the chief's leadership and the relationship that you guys have. And I kinda laughed 'cause you said, Mr. President Rehneer says, "You know, we don't always agree on everything." Don't worry, you know, that happens here too. We don't always agree on everything. If you watch our meetings, that just means we're normal. Your normal, it's not okay when it's all yeses. There's some times where you gotta have some disagreements to have some compelling conversations. But Chief Jake Fisher, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for helping us with that collaboration. Thank you for putting safety as the number-one issue for our students and for our residents in the city of Almani. And you have had a very tough job in your leadership. And like our superintendent says, that you can truly see the leadership of a person during hard times. And the city of Almani has had some hard times and it's been an emotional roller coaster and a very sad time, but you have seen us through that. So, with that being said, our school board here, in appreciation for your partnership in supporting and prioritizing school safety through collaboration to meet the needs of our students and schools, we congratulate you as the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. We too give you this recognition and we also offer you a very special lapel pin.
And so, now I'll turn it over to my colleagues, to my Vice President.
So nice to see you here too. We are familiar. We see each other constantly. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chief Fisher, for having the youth spirit. It's so important that all of us that we are around our children, we have to have the youth inside of us. And remember always that they are our future and we have to help them in everything. And of course, they have some problems. They do something wrong, but they are growing. And when we have a wonderful people like you and our, the chiefs that we had before and you have that spirit of youth and understanding and loving them, we really feel very proud of you. Thank you so much and keep it up the wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. And, you know, thank you for your leadership that keep us safe, keep our students safe. With your leadership, you will take, you know, your Police Department to the next level. And, you know, we're really deeply grateful of your service to the community and to our school district also. Thank you very much.
I for one am just very thankful for the relationship that we have between our school district and the Police Department and the openness and the willingness that you, you know, available to meet with our superintendents. I know sometimes we put some pressure on Dr. Zuniga and I know he kinda carries our questions with him to the meetings, but I'm glad that you're always available to just to meet and discuss things and kind of find creative solutions to the issues that affect us and that affect our students. So, thank you so much.
Chief Fisher, assuming the position of Chief of Police under the most difficult of circumstances, you know, I don't think anybody would ever wish that on anyone, but you've stepped up, you know, and you've carried the department over the last year. I had the opportunity of knowing Chief Lowry for a period of time and, you know, we'd get together so often. We'd have lunch. Sometimes we'd have dinner, talk about our lives, what was going on, our professional work. And you'd come up often in conversation, you know, just know how highly he thought of you. I don't know that he ever specifically mentioned successor, but he definitely talked about those that were, you know, what I would say is top five. And your name got mentioned a lot. And I know, you know, being in that shadow may sometimes be uncomfortable, but in the last year, you've shown yourself to be your own person. And we appreciate the amount of work that you've done, not only for the department, but for also our schools and our community. You know, your officers who are here supporting you today, you know, it means a lot to have them here with you. Having gone through the Citizens Academy, I wanted to say a few years ago, but it's gonna be close to 10 years now, having known some of these officers now for quite some time. Sergeant Castillo, I met during the academy in 2014. The quality of work, the quality of employees, of staff, of sworn personnel, civilian personnel speaks very highly of not only the department, but yourself and your leadership. So, I wanna say thank you, congratulations on your well-deserved recognition today. And I look forward to a continued partnership with not only you, but your officers in the department. Congratulations.
I would also like to extend my gratitude. As I mentioned earlier, it is very important that our schools' communities are kept safe and that students feel that. And so, to have that connection is very important. So, again, I'd just like to thank you for your vital role in keeping our student population safe.
So, now it's time to hear from our great chief, Chief Fisher.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I'd just like to give recognition to the men and women of the Almani Police Department, who, in my opinion, provide a superior service that is unmatched, especially in our School Resource Officer Program that helps make, helped make this process so much easier. And the recognition that was always already given by Detective Wyatt Rehneer, our POA president, who I was able to work hand-in-hand with and help get that smooth transition. And when it comes to the students, the future of Almani, the students here at our district, everybody knows that that's number-one. That's our number-one priority, our students and their safety, of course. And it was, in a sense, a much easier sell than I anticipated going into this, realizing there was gonna be a little bit of a challenge. But I'd also like to recognize Dr. Zuniga and everyone here for your work is just, I'm honored for the recognition. But once again, it was, it's because of the men and women of my department that made it so easy. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Another round of applause for chief. So, we'll go ahead and line up for a picture. We'll go ahead, the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much, yes. Good. We're going to go ahead and continue with our meeting. Good night, buenas noches. Thank you again, Chief Jake Fisher and POA President Wyatt Rehner, Sergeant Castillo, and also Mr. Jesus Rojas. Thank you for being here tonight to support your colleagues and, awesome, have a good night. I know you guys have had a long day, so thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and continue at this time where our item B, B as in boy, eight, B eight, public comments. Dr. Zuniga, do I have any public comment cards? Please bring them forward.
No public comments, excuse me.
Okay, there is no public comments, so we're going to go ahead and move on to B, B as in boy, B nine, communications from union representatives, EMUEA, the Almani Union Educators Association, and CSEA, California School Employees Association. Do we have any representatives? Dr. Edward Zuniga, superintendent?
I don't see any this evening, Mr. Padilla.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, we're going to go on to C, C as in Charlie, oral slash written communication. This is an opportunity for board members to report to the community and to their constituents what events or what things that they have been doing in terms of the work of their role to report back to the community. With that being said, I'll go ahead and start off to my right, board, a board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
I was lucky enough to attend this past Monday, a PTA luncheon for admin, board, superintendents. Dr. Zuniga was there. Estela Torres de Seigres was there, but there were representatives from all over our local districts. So it was nice to see that PTA is still around, they're still strong, and there were some stories of, you know, some chapters that were struggling a little bit, but they're continuing to be visible, participating, so it was nice that the spirit was still there. So, over the last few weeks, I've been lucky to get to some of football games, was able to get to most schools, all the schools, this year, and with that, I just want to wish luck to all of our teams, not only our football teams but also our volleyball teams that are going into playoffs. Dr. Zuniga, I think Rosemead is Saturday for a championship, I believe, in volleyball?
Saturday, 6:00 PM, Moreno Valley.
And so, yeah, not just football, but a lot of our student athletes are doing very, very well. Saturday, I marched with my school, the Children's Day Parade, but I was able to see many of our board members there. It's always nice to be able to catch our high schools participating as well. So that and a lot of our students who may not be in the band are involved in other groups, so it was nice to see that. And then I was also present at the dedication for the police department, they dedicated the station to, or the Police Services Building to Ben Larry. So it was nice to see, again, Estela Torres de Seigres there, but it was a beautiful Chief Jake Fisher spoke, the family spoke, and then they unveiled a plaque in honor of Chief Ben Larry, so it was a busy month.
Oh, the last thing also, I was able to vote, Dr. Zuniga, for the recommendations from this board. For the LACO was a reorganization committee, so I did submit that vote on behalf of our school board. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, a school board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. Thank you for working out in the community and reporting back to the stakeholders what it is that you do as a school board member. I appreciate it as the president, and I know my colleagues do as well. Board member Florencio Briones, any communication?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Padilla. I wanted to congratulate the Mountain View High School girls volleyball team. I had the opportunity to attend a game against Newbury Park on October 23rd, where they, the Lady Vikings were victorious in two out of the three games, so I wanted to congratulate them for their win. The other item I wanted to communicate to the board tonight was, last week I participated in a meeting with the Region 23 A, B, and C delegates for the California School Boards Association. I am one of the delegates that was elected to Region 23B, and in this meeting that we had with our regional director, we were informed that Region 23C, which includes some of our neighboring districts, including Azusa Unified, Basset Unified, Baldwin Park Unified, that they would be losing a seat in the delegate assembly due to declining enrollment during the next reapportionment that'll be voted on by the delegate assembly next month at the CSBA Annual Education Conference. So I wanted to share that with you because, for some historical context, in 2019, Region 23 lost five seats then, so we effectively lost about a third of our voice as delegates in this, and now we'll be losing an additional, or potentially be losing an additional seat. As the delegates, as we met, we decided that we would submit letters on behalf of ourselves as individuals to the Board of Directors for California School Boards Association, opposing this loss of a seat, and we also ask individual, not individual, excuse me, we also asked school districts, school boards in this region to adopt resolutions opposing this move as well. So those are the two items that I wanted to communicate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Florencio Briones. Board member, Mr. Qui Nguyen.
There are two major event that I attended. The CCFC, Stand for College Career Family Conference, happened on Saturday, October 21st, 2023. You know, with attendance is President Padilla and Professor De Seigres. It's an overwhelming event. There's so many parents that, you know, attended, parents and students attended. While sitting at this table, and while Mr. Padilla conversing in Spanish with one of the parent advisory council, even though he's conversing Spanish, I'm able to understand. The first time that, you know, that parent feel that her voice been heard, and you know, it's kind of moving, you know, when you listen to that. And you know, she's been in the parent advisory committee before, but never before that, you know, her voice been heard, now her voice been heard by us. On that note, so I would recommend my fellow board member, the next parent, super PAC, Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, some of us should attend and listen to the parents' voice, and make sure that, you know, their concern is heard, and you know, we can address those, okay? Besides, I attended three session, the one with Rosemead High School, presented by Principal Salan Nitro, and you know, she's explaining about the school, you know, school branding, what they have to offer, how many clubs have to offer, and you know, what kind of academic, you know, achievement they have done. And it's a wonderful event, and you know, she explained, you know, who are in charge, who running the program, and you know, she also showcased the CAS, you know, CAS stand for California Student Assessment Progress and Performance. So even though, you know, it's good, but she says there's still a lot of work to be done. So a lot of parents interested in how they can improve the outcome on CAS, and she explained, you know, go and practice online and help your student to be aware of the CAS, because in high school, the CAS only given on 11th grade, that being near graduation. So that's like a summary of, you know, what they learned so far in high school, mostly what they learned so far in high school. And it's a wonderful session. The second session is the math, presented by Mountain View High School Principal Jose Banyas. So he tried to connect, you know, the difference between elementary math and high school math, and how math are taught, how math can be feel and, you know, apply in real world. And you know, it's a wonderful session, and in attendance is Mr. Padilla and Professor De Seigres, you know, we had to play game with the math presentation, and you can feel it, you know, even the shape and form are different, but the results are the same. So that's why that math is all about, about critical thinking, about, you know, teach students how to think, how to process their thought, and you know, I receive a lot of good feedback from parents, even while walking out to the parking lot, a lot of Spanish parents say, oh, that's wonderful, that, you know, I never know, math is, you know, it's like that, and you know, so, you know, it's a good feedback, it's excellent feedback, and knowing Mr. Banyas, he was an asset in Rosemead High School, you know, he's teach from low level math to calculus, so you know, he know math very well. And you know, leaving Rosemead, we losing an asset from Rosemead, but Mountain View High School gained an asset. So you know, Mountain View is well deserved, and I hope under his leadership, we will turn thing around, and you know, and we can achieve better, you know, academically, especially in math. And the first session I attended is financial aid, the teaching parents and students the resources, you know, what kind of resources they have, what kind of aid they can apply for, Cal Grand A, Cal Grand B, Cal Grand C, and you know, all the federal grant, local scholarship, and it's very helpful, a lot of parents attended it. And this is really a successful event, because I remember, you know, we had to wait outside because the number of attendees exceed our expectations, so we had to make special arrangement to accommodate the lunch for extra number of people, at least about fifty, sixty people, you know, extra, that we, you know, more than we expected it. But you know, it's a great, successful event I ever seen. The second event is last Saturday, I and Mr. Padilla attended Children's Day Parade. It's a wonderful event also, and especially when you see the little angel from Hesta Program walking like a little angel, you know, flying around on the street, so beautiful, and especially our school band, our school cheerleading team from all five, our high school, it's our pride, and it's our brand, and you know, that the calling about branding our school, and that's something we should remember. Those, you know, the pictures speak thousand words, you know, all those students that parading and, you know, show, and especially showcasing what they are and what we are, and they represented us, and I'm very proud. And you know, last but not least, but you know, we went on the trolley with, you know, parade with Senator Susan Rubio, Mayor Jessica Encana, President Padilla, and all the dictator, and it's a wonderful event that I attended, and I'm very pleased, and I'm very happy, and that's it.
Thank you, board member Qui Nguyen. Again, you know, it gives me great pride as president, and I know that I've been very vocal about those board members who sit on this dais, that we must go out and do the work that we were elected to do. So it gives me great pride that everybody tonight is talking about all of the different events and all the activities. We can't all go to everything, so we must divide some of these activities, and so, thank you, board member Qui Nguyen. Professor Estela Torres de Seigres?
Yes, Mr. President. I attend the college, the College and Career Academy. I really congratulate Dr. Zuniga and Mrs. Eddie de Cheverria. They put a wonderful program. I was talking a lot with the parents, seeing them, and they were very happy, and especially they were taking care of their children, which is the most important part. And after that, I attend on Monday, the 23rd, by Zoom, to a special, a special presentation that Laxta, yeah, Laxta had about mental health. It was put by Deborah, Deborah Duarte, which is part of this program, and she was talking in the importance that we have to give to our students, yes, but also we have to give importance to our administrators, teachers, because after the pandemic, everybody was very, everybody was very uncomfortable, feeling really bad, and she was telling us that there is, there are programs where they can help our teachers and our students. And the only thing that we had to communicate is with Mary Barrasa, that she has a program for health, mental health. Now finally, we started to work with our girl state. Our principals, thank you very much, Dr. Zuniga. Our principals and assistant principals finally gave me the twenty-five candidates for girl state, that is the ones that they require in order to select only one delegate. Only five girls are going to go, but I am so proud of all our principals, they were so nice and kind. Yesterday, they sent me all the information, and next week I start having the interviews, no, as a judge, meet them and let them know how is the program, the girl state. I have all the program ready, of course, that I keep listening. Every month, we have a meeting with the, from the Department of California Girl State, how we have to work. Up to now, we have four hundred and fifty high schools that are going to participate from North California to South California. Our five high schools are one of the first ones, and we are really very happy to see how enthusiastic are everybody, especially I give thanks if the principals from our high schools are listening to me. Thank you, thank you very much, and the assistant principals for helping me to help to have a good job. Now, as Mr. Carlos, our board member Carlos Alcedo said, I also attend the presentation that they have to the change of the, the office of the, that they changed the policeman, and it's called the Chief Benny Lowry. I wanted to talk and say something because he is a very, he was a very special person for me, because he always talked to me and let me know how important were the students. And I was talking with them, and they gave me this, this, I don't know, if I give it to everybody, there was a special kind of band bracelet with his name, and I wanted to share with you to see it, how important is that? And it was a very interesting, very interesting day, and of course, Chief Fisher talked beautiful about the importance, that was the thing that was very important for me, the importance of taking care of all our students. That's the one that they did that day, and of course, I attend the PTA, the PTA for our, our superintendents. They are doing really wonderful things, and I think that we are doing very good in our, in our high schools, because Dr. Zuniga is really following the important thing, parents are the most important teachers, and if we don't have parents, I don't know, parents have to help us to educate our children. I couldn't attend to our beautiful program of children's parade, really hurt me a lot because I love to be there, and especially when they told me that our high school bands were there, because I had to attend to a were there, because I had to attend to a, we call this the, the quarterly conference that we have in Business and Professional Women's Club. For me, it's very important to attend, to attend to this conference, because this, this is the club that helps our adult education. Usually, we give two scholarships, but I would like to give more scholarships to our ladies. Unfortunately, scholarships only for ladies, but we're going to try to give also to men. But those ladies that they, for any reason, they couldn't finish high school, and they finishing in our adult education, and they go to college, we give them usually two scholarships. And that's the reason I had to attend to that one. I had a big surprise when they gave me a, they gave me a certificate, because these ladies from Business and Professional Women's Club from El Monte, they follow all the problems that we have for eight months here in our, in our district about the students with disabilities. They, they saw that, yes, I always take care of our students with disabilities. And they gave me a special recognition that I, I didn't, I didn't expect to give it to me, because there was really horrible months, but these ladies said that the way that I act was the best. Mr. President, that's.
Thank you, Professor Stella Torres De Secrist. I'm gonna go ahead and allow our student trustee to also give a report, if you have one, Board Member Sofia.
Thank you, President Padilla. So in regards to SAC, we have our next SAC meeting on November 13th at Mountain View High School. There, we will be discussing November Resolutions, which consists of Native American Heritage Month and National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. So we'll be discussing those. I would also like to give an update on what schools have been carrying out, kind of like a recap of what they've been doing throughout the month of October on their campuses. So over at Arroyo High School, they held their homecoming themed a night, night as like a royal knight, a knight in New Orleans, on October 13th. There, they had a spirit week, and they had flower grams leading up to homecoming. They hosted a mental health week throughout the first week of October, and provided their students with activities to relax and take a break. Their ASB attended the Vibe Leadership Conference. They hosted a Pink Out football game on October 27th in celebration of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and they held a Halloween Spirit Week leading up to Halloween and a costume contest on Halloween. At South Almani High School, they held their homecoming themed Hoco Horror Nights, which I thought was a really cool theme, on October 13th. They had a spirit week and activities to lead up to it as well. They had their Griffin Bowl rivalry against Almani High School, along with a joint Spirit Week with Almani High School to kind of get that competitive spirit up. They had a Pink Out football game as well on October 20th for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and they hosted a Haunted House event on October 30th for their students. At Almani High School, they had their homecoming, which is themed City Beyond the Stars on September 30th. They decorated their administrators' offices and made them posters and a biography Instagram post in celebration of Week of School Administrators. They had a lunch recognition ceremony to honor their senior fall sport athletes, and they're currently still holding a month-long clothing drive from mid-October to December 1st to donate gently used or new clothing. At Mountain View High School, they held their homecoming themed Hollywood Walk of Fame on October 6th, and they as well hosted a Spirit Week and a fashion show to lead up to the event. They hosted their Haunted House on October 27th that was put on by their very own Mountain View Drama. And they held senior nights for fall sport athletes like volleyball, cheer, football, band, color guard, and drill. And their ASB had a unique soak-in ASB'er lunchtime event, in which students were able to choose a size of container to dump water on an ASB member of their choice, which I thought was interesting. And then they had, oh, and then at Rosemead High School, they held their homecoming themed Dance the Night Away on October 20th. They hosted a Spirit Week lunch activities leading up to it, and they had their annual tradition of bands March the Halls, as well as a Kiss FM DJ Lunch Event on the day of homecoming. They had senior nights for fall sports, cheer, football, band, color guard, and their dance team, which just started up this year on October 20th. ASB hosted a senior tailgate event on October 5th. They had all clubs food sale on October 6th, and a Haunted House fundraiser during lunch that was put on by RHS Drama, and a costume contest on Halloween during lunch. And that is the end of my communication. Thank you.
And as Dr. Edwards Zuniga?
Yes, thank you, President Padilla. I know that some of you have mentioned some of the events that happened in this long month of October, it, one of the longest months of the school year, but lots happening throughout this month, and we're glad we're moving into November, have a fresh start in a month, and it's a shorter month, the holidays are coming. But I'm excited to provide this short update to you about the event that was mentioned earlier from some of you who participated. And this is the update for family engagement. I know we've covered different topics, I'd like to celebrate the success that our district has had with the family engagement, more specific to the most recent event held district-wide, and this is more of a community event, the College and Career, College and Career Family Conference. As you can see, this picture tells a lot, lot to, just to be proud about, not only the numbers, the significant number, I think it was a bit overcrowded, but we made it work. And I think that people were happy that they were treated not only to a conference, but a conference that is in a professional setting, away from, obviously, the community environment, that's what normally conferences are for, when you go and focus and take back what you've learned and apply it either at the home or on campus for students, or even us has educated what we learn from parents too. So with that said, if I can, see if I can skip over this one. Can you help me out here? Yeah. You can move it if you'd like. All right, thank you. Just in a summary of what the College and Career Family Conference is, we started this when we noticed that the spring, the spring conference that is held amongst our partners, not only Almani Union, but our partner school districts and even surrounding districts that we put on in the spring was not enough for our families. We wanted to come back in the fall and provide something that the district took, took on it by itself. And we did include our partner schools that showed interest as far as parents coming into the high schools to get a head start about college and career awareness. The event, as Mr. Wen mentioned, was Saturday, the 21st, just a few weeks ago, and also the target ALCAP goal, I got to reminder that this is only just our priority, but also the parent engagement is part of our goals within Almani Union High School District. Provide varied opportunities to support, promote, and maintain a high level of parent and family engagement. The conference focus, that is the goal, but the focus is to provide workshops that focus on supporting families and assisting their children on navigating college and career preparedness through a series of workshops. And the target audience was our parents, our guardians, our family members, but also our children, our students that either are in the high school or actually are in the middle schools. They joined their, their, their parents on Saturday. I don't think I've ever recall a conference where I've seen so many families together. Typically, you'll see the parent, which is maybe the mother, show up to a conference, and it's, they're by themselves, and they get a lot out of it, but to see the families come together and show up was very impressive, very proud moment for us to look at. It's just that kind of, we, we've, almost like we've, we've turned the tide with bringing in not only fathers, but also students joining their fathers and their mothers in this process here through this conference. Our facilitators were our district staff and also our educational partners. Next slide, please. The program, as Mr. Wen mentioned, he spoke about the three sessions he participated. The three sessions engage families and three specific topics here, college and career, focused more on higher ed. We had representatives from the UC, the CSU's, the community colleges to speak about not only their program, but the benefits of their programs, or how families can prepare to enter into the CSU's, UC's, or even community colleges. We also had just really general information about what type of colleges are out there throughout the state, including private colleges as well. So the UC, UC CSU system, A through G's, financial literacy, Dreamers Resources, senior timelines, and also our CT, CT programs that are also part of the community colleges. So if a student is interested in doing the two-year first and is interested in careers, specific colleges have specific CT programs that they invest in. And it's important to know that, you're just not gonna go to a community college and expect all the programs to be available. So it's smart to navigate which programs as far as career are suitable for each student in each of those community colleges that are surrounding us. The high school program, also I'd mentioned, another proud moment is we had principals, actually were facilitators, they participated, I think Dr. Byn, soon to be Dr. Banyas, Dr. Morales, Ms. Alan Netro, had their own session, and they spoke about not only their school, but also what they can provide to students, and also engage parents as well, and the resources and the programs that they have on their own campus as well. They also took part in instruction as far as understanding math, as Mr. Wen mentioned, that was an enjoyable experience, putting my, just putting, being part of the crowd and learning from Mr. Banyas as well. Not being a math major myself, it was intriguing to see that, and to see his type of work transform from a principal to actual teacher, demonstrating that to students, staff, parents, and also board members as well. Coffee with the principal, as mentioned, and then other programs like Avid, online courses, those are engaging through our staff, that part, that informed our parents about that. Most importantly, senior timelines, you gotta start somewhere, right? You, you can't be a senior and expect that, you know, everything's gonna go well. So starting even at the eighth grade, seventh grade, preparing for high school, and then the road, the path through, you know, the high school setting into upper ed. And then last but not least, we incorporated some sessions about what we all talk about now, the social emotional learning component, what happens on campuses, not only in high schools, but also primary, primary schools that are dealing with the same problem that we are for our students. And engaging our families to understand what the teenagers experience, not only in the mindset, but also everyday life as a teenager, from our demographics to our first-generation students, having our immigrant parents understand the changes that, you know, students do have living in the United States, and how that they can be supportive of those children growing up as first generation, like myself and others of you that have gone through the same process, even as immigrants too. Teen Brain Suicide Awareness and Childbirth, childbirth order, that was interesting. They talk about the order that your children, it, it, it does matter, and I've learned that just in my siblings and what I've done, growing up with my siblings, I was the youngest in the family. So a fun opportunity that I got to do is participate in parents that were also the youngest in their family, and we spoke about our experiences as kids in, in the, in different, obviously, different times. So that was an opportunity for us to engage with our families. Next slide, please. A little bit of the agencies and nonprofits that took part as well. We not only had the session, but we also had resources for our families readily available in between the sessions, before the session started and after the session started. And these individuals not only had tables to provide information, but I also saw them go into the sessions themselves too. So it was nice to see that they also participated in that too. From our adult school programming to inform our families about what our adult schools offer, to partners like Almani Promise Foundation, we also had Rojondo PCC onboard to provide information too, Cal State LA, our Avid representative as well. But you can see a list of resources that our families can take advantage of, and work permits. I was impressed by the work permits, because a lot of folks like, where do you get work permits at? And it was informative session, I saw a lot of people go to that table too, and everybody inquired about when kids wanna get jobs, what they do. Next slide. A little bit about our summary here, participation rates by school. We actually, our goal was 350 total. We ended up with a larger number, as you could probably see in the conference room in the morning, we were just like, whoa, what's going on here, and how are we gonna adjust it? But we made it happen. The registration totals, as you can see by school site, we had about 342 parents and students combined, but we also didn't expect other parents show up too. So they, there were some folks that showed up and say, hey, I wanna be part of this. We took them, there was additional 20, so that added up to about 362 combined parent. When you add up our partner schools, we had about 85 parents and their families participate, so that was a lot of numbers, and we actually not only met our goal, but we exceeded room capacity probably in our numbers, which is a good thing, it's good news about that as well. Next slide. Summary participation again, what, who was there and who participated? So this kind of gives you an idea about our staff, our facilitators, our presenters, our educational partners, and total students and parents, approximately about 428 altogether. And participate per session, that gives you an idea about throughout the day, they stayed around, they weren't going anywhere, that average about 360 or 375 overall together, even increased as we went through the sessions. The total for 2022 was 305, that includes everybody here. This year, far exceeded at 428 too. So this is a good trend that we're seeing, and I think just listening to parents and the feedback from former board members who were there, was very positive and a proud moment for our district too. Next slide. We also not only stopped there, we take input on, on the spot, so we asked parents to give us feedback at, after every session. And the testimonials that I did here, this is just a, a, a portion, a snapshot of the testimonials that I'd like to share with you. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but take a look at what, what I enjoyed about my experience as parents stated, and a lot of the highlights are very similar. Today's experience is the environment and the topics that were discussed, people here are helpful and welcoming, talk about A through G's, they enjoy that. I learned about, you know, about the steps parents must take to prepare their children into applying for colleges too. They talked about the topics that they heard, that the parents engaged, and they were, you know, they were part of it, they felt part of it. They thought the financial aid information and career programs were informative too. I enjoyed the different activities offered during some of the sessions, that means hands-on activities that they enjoyed. The speakers, they, they were very good resources, even though my daughter's in eighth grade, this experience was great exposure for her future plans. I enjoyed meeting my daughter's principal and enthusiasm they showed. I also enjoyed the speakers sharing paths, their life story, present stories, and their personal experiences, which I and my kids can relate to. It makes me feel, my situations are no different than, that regardless of what background or culture you're, you are from, we all experience the same thing as well. So in retrospect, you know, these, these are all good things to take in, but also we wanna learn how we can improve too, right? So the next slide, go on, we'll ask our participants how my experiences can be better. So here's a couple of things that I, I looked at and looked at, these are common things that we saw, more time, explain, to explain and to obtain valuable information. These are direct responses from our parents. Have access to Wi-Fi, sometimes they wanted to integrate some of the Wi-Fi or some of the technology, so maybe looking and working with the facility to see if we can have some access to that, we can work through that. Need bigger rooms for the more popular sessions, we, it was crowded, some sessions were too crowded for the little room that they had. So we heard about the, you know, the noise level, and obviously that happens too. For example, the UC comprehensive review was full. Have the sessions a little more interact, interaction, more interaction with the crowd as well. Parents mentioned that, you know, that's where they retain more information when they get to interact and feel part of the presentation too, so a good thing to know. We have more topics of new drugs, and how, how to not compare your child, your children topics of the middle child, as well, they like that too, and they wanna learn more about that. I was not able to attend a workshop that I really wanted to attend because it was full. So that was a little frustrating for some of our parents, that they had their schedule, they show up and they're full. So we, we were trying to strategize about how we can do that. And I think one of the comments there was that maybe we should record them and have an opportunity to put them on our website, so that when parents really want to see it, they get a chance to go back home and actually look at it too. So I think that's something that we can invest in with technology and do that through streaming. More sessions to help parents obtain better understanding of financial aid questions, think the questions are critical to them, and they're afraid, so they wanna know, what does this mean? Guiding us through the place, it could make it easier, that means location. It was a bit of a puzzle sometimes, you know, directing folks, so you can learn from that as well. The speakers and topics are great, however, we can't attend them simultaneously. Please consider recording the event speaker and allow others to, that didn't attend to benefit as well. So not a bad idea, I think it's pretty good. And there's plenty of more for us to continue to look at how we can grow. I'll end it here with a quick, just a two-minute slideshow of the event for that night, for that day, I'm sorry. Can you click that up for me, please? This is also on our website, by the way. This is also on our website, by the way.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And I believe that's it, just a wrap right there. Again, thank you to the Board of Trustees for, uh, Board of Trustees for not only participating and also engaging, but also supporting this event. It's a valuable experience for our families, our, our staff as well, and it brings the community together too, so I enjoyed that very much on Saturday. And I, I, I hope you did too. Again, thanks Dr. Rivas too, she was there throughout the day, supporting our staff as well, who did a remarkable job in putting this together. So kudos to the Ed Services Department with Edith de Chavirria, the whole entire department there, and staff who supported our, our TOSAs, our teachers, our principals, everyone, everyone did their part to make this experience wonderful for our families. That's it, President Padilla.
Thank you Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga, that was a phenomenal presentation that you just gave and you encapsulated everything. As the president of, of the El Monte Union High School District, I too need to go out and do the work that I was elected to do, and just like my colleagues took part in different activities, I did too. And yes, the College and Career Family Conference at the Pacific Palms Resort was an amazing event. You know, kudos to you, thank you to you, Dr. Edward Zuniga as our superintendent, you were there with the board. Thank you to my Vice President, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres for being in attendance. Thank you for, to my Secretary, also for being there in attendance, and we love talking with the parents, and it wasn't just our Latino families, it was also our Asian families that were there, that came and, and made their presence felt in large numbers to send the message that we care about our children's education, build it and we will come, you know, have an event, we will, uh, outdo the expectations, and that Saturday was a testament to that. Also, kudos to Dr. Laura Rivas, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I know that you are the, the boss to all of the departments that fall under that in curriculum and instruction. Also, thank you to Edith de Chavirria and all of the staff in those departments that you had, thank you for being there, thank you for speaking to the families that were there in their primary language and making them feel that they were the most important people there. And I know that I always say this, that students and parents are the number one client in the El Monte Union High School District, without them, we are nothing. All of us get fed, all of us, uh, because of their children, that, the money that they generate that comes here, that's how teachers get paid, that's how all of you guys get paid, even our stipend that we get as board members, they are the number one client, make no mistake about that, and I don't mince my words when I say that, I mean it in that order. I also wanna thank the El Monte Police Department and the El Monte Police Officers Association. I had the opportunity to attend the trunk or treat. This is a very popular event in El Monte where different businesses come together in the back of a parking lot at the Valley Mall, or Main Street as they call it now, I, I still refer to it as the Valley Mall. And the, all of our families from all the neighboring school districts and the high schools come all dressed up in their costumes, and there's tons of music, there's a DJ, and everybody brings their candies, and I wanna give a big shout out to Principal, uh, the Principal of Fernando Arledesma High School for always being there, representing our El Monte Union High School District. Freddie Artiaga and, and some of your staff members there, thank you so much for representing our entire school district, and I know that we, we were very tired being there, but again, our kids come first, uh, and that was a very special day for our community, and I thank you for an awesome trunk or treat, um, just a, a very nice event. In addition to that, yes, uh, my colleague and I, Mr. Qui Nguyen, also attended the El Monte Children's Day Parade. What an amazing parade, and the fact that all of our bands from the El Monte Union High School District participated, just gave it that extra touch of class, and I can't wait for us when we have the Rosemead Parade, because we have told Dr. Zuniga that we want all of our bands to participate, and this was kind of like a preview of what the Rosemead Parade's also gonna look like. And Board Member Qui Nguyen, you know, used a word called branding, that is the best time to put our brand out there and to bring the expertise that our students have i- in their craft of band or song or tall flags, and they do a lot of practicing, put in a lot of long hours, you know, on their campuses, so those parades are a time to showcase it and to see how wonderful our kids are, not just in academics, but also in the arts, and I was very impressed, so kudos to all of our bands that came out, uh, the parents loved it, uh, the kids loved it, the ones that were in the, um, in the parade. And also thank you, thank you to Senator Susan Rubio, uh, the fact that a senator continues to pay attention to our communities, I know you've heard me say this multiple times, that when I was a kid, and I'm a product of the El Monte City School District, and I'm a product of the El Monte Union High School District, and I cannot recall when I was a young kid that we ever had a senator, a state senator, who would even pay attention to, you know, uh, brown communities like ours. And so the fact that the senator comes for a local El Monte Parade, and she rides with all of the elected officials from our city, uh, from Mayor Jessica Ncona, Councilwoman Victoria, uh, Victoria Martinez Muella, also, uh, Councilwoman Alma Puente, also, uh, Councilwoman, I'm going blank, our Councilwoman from the Mountain View area, help me out, guys. She's the newest, one of the newest, uh...
Councilwoman Cortez.
Councilwoman Cortez, yeah, she was also there. Also, uh, Vallelindo School District Trustee Veronica Laria was there, and also too, the Superintendent that was also there, Dr. Evans, just so impressed with her presence and with her, uh, involvement in our community. Just, it was a very pleasant event that brings our community together, reminds us that we're all in it for the same reason, and so, uh, thank you colleagues that attended, um, I was really impressed by that. Also, thank you to a school board member from the El Monte City School District, Mr. David Seigres for also attending and representing himself and, and his, uh, his wife. And what else, there's so many things, so many other things. So Senator, again, thank you for coming out and paying attention to the El Monte Union High School District. I would also like to thank, uh, my mentor, um, who sits to my right and is my Vice President, whom I have a lot of affection and a lot of love for, for her and her family, but she was recognized by the El Monte Business and Professional Women's Club, and they're a member of the Sierra Mar District, member of the California Federation. The El Monte Business and Professional Women's Club proudly presented a certificate of recognition to our very own, the Honorable Professor Stella Torres de Seigres for her outstanding service to disabled students in our community. That gives me great pride, and I know that you alluded to the fact that we had several months of, of things that went back and forth and spoke negatively about you, but the fact that an outside organization followed, uh, this topic of special needs kids in our school district, and that they were willing to put their name and their institution and recognize you with the certificate, is a testament to the type of board member that you are. You always put children first, you are always, I always refer to you as the Energizer Bunny, you just keep going and going and going and going and going and going, and sometimes put the rest of us to shame, and I truly mean that, not in a bad way, but you truly do the work that you are elected to do, and even when you were not on this board, you still stayed loyal to, uh, girl state and your husband to boy state, and so thank you. It is a great honor for me to announce this, that the Business and Professional Women's Club recognizes you for the outstanding person that you are, and like, I already know that, but I'm glad that other institutions are, are acknowledging the same. So I'd like to share this with my colleagues so that they could see it, um, if you could pass that down and, uh, you could see this great award. So again, congratulations to our Honorable Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. In addition to that, what other work did I do for the people of the El Monte Union High School District? These are good news things, I'd like to thank all of our teachers that teach English Language Arts. What do I mean by that? The district, the El Monte Union High School District showed a slight increase in English Language Arts for students meeting or exceeding standards. We went from fifty-nine point thirty-eight percent to sixty point eighteen percent. That shows, showed us, showed an in- increase of point eight percent in the area of Language Arts, so kudos to those students that teach English Language Arts, or English as we call it in, in our high school. I wanna give recognition where recognition is due. In addition to that, something else, you all know that in my day job with the El Monte City School District, I work under Child Welfare and Attendance, and so when I read this, it, it made me very happy, and it says, "The California Department of Education also provided data on chronic absenteeism." Chronic absenteeism is a part of the data that is released, provided to the public, and basically, chronic absenteeism is a student who misses, misses ten percent or more of, ten percent or more of the days they were enrolled in school is considered chronically absent. To provide more information about the levels of chronic absenteeism, the CDE collects, reports, collects and reports information on the number and rate of students who are chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is also a state academic indicator under LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding Formula, priority on the California School Dashboard. So any, anybody attending a school can type in California Dashboard, type in your school name, and it'll give you information on attendance and a whole bunch of other areas of achievement. But for our district, we had in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty school year, school year, uh, we had twenty-five point two zero percent in, uh, our chronic absenteeism, let me take that back, we were at twenty-seven point ten percent in the twenty-one, twenty-two percent. That means that almost three out of ten students were suffering from chronic absenteeism, meaning that they were missing more than ten percent of the school year. So I'm happy to announce that we dropped it down to twenty-five point two zero percent. So we decrease, which is what you wanna do, you wanna decrease chronic absenteeism by one point nine percent. And then just so you get a sense of what does that mean, if you decrease attendance by one percent, you will save your district one million dollars. As a child welfare person, parents will tell me, well, Mr. Padilla, you just want my kid to go to school 'cause you want the district to collect the money. And my answer is, yes, you're absolutely right, because that's how we buy program for children, that's how we do the things that we do for your children, we don't use that money for other things, and so, yes, I want them to be in school, number one, for their academic achievement, uh, and two, yes, we need the money. Without the money, we cannot provide the wonderful things that we do. Thank you to, um, Dr. Rivas, I wanna talk about the forty parents that you graduated from Disciplina Positiva workshops. The attendance in those workshops emulates the attendance of the parents going to the College and Career, uh, Conference that we had. You know, it, it, it undoes that, sometimes I hear statements like, and I like to take them on, they'll say things like, well, Latino kids or Latino parents don't care about education. This is a testament that that is a fallacy, it's something that I don't like to hear, or, or they will say, uh, things that a certain ethnic group cares more about education than Latinos, and it's one of those things that I, that I take on every time that I hear it, that I'm not okay with, uh, and when I see that forty parents are coming to Disciplina Positiva workshops on a weekend, that is, speaks volumes for itself, so I wanna thank you for that and for providing that presenter and those workshops. Mr. Banyas, I attended the sessions for Mr. Banyas, amazing presenter, I've always just known him as a principal, but to see him move into the role of teacher and be a presenter at these workshops, and using manipulatives and hands-on and, and bringing it out to a level that parents can understand, uh, you know, some of the mathematics that their kids are learning in class, was powerful, so I send kudos to you, uh, soon to be Dr. Jose Banyas, uh, you know, tells the story of an immigrant coming from the Philippines and living the American dream and achieving at such an amazing level, and now leading one of our schools that, um, needs, uh, a lot of support. And I'm glad that we put him in that position. Also to Mr. Principal from South El Monte, Dr. Morales, uh, great hearing about the early college academy program that we have in partnership with Rio Hondo College. It's a great program, I know that we have it on this part of town, I'm hoping that we can expand it over to the Pasadena City College side, which will be our Rosemead High School and, um, Arroyo High School. Thank you for presenting to our parents and letting them know everything that we have to offer, and for offering it for our students, and that for, for students that are freshmen, if they get involved in that program for four years, they can come out with almost an A, A degree, and be, uh, almost, when they leave high school, they'll be a sophomore in college, so. Also, thank you for CalSoaps, the California Student Opportunities and Access Program, talking about financial aid, but not just talking about FAFSA, the Free, Free Application for Federal Student Aid, but also talking and giving access to our Dreamers, our students that are undocumented, and talking about the California Dream Act to ensure that they too have access to higher education, and I wanna give a big shout out to Jennifer Valadez and Michael Chavez from CalSoaps, thank you for that. And then lastly, another session that was pretty awesome was, um, what was the last one, uh, Banyas, Financial Aid and Coffee with the Principal, I covered those. I did trunk or treat, attendance, okay? In two days, uh, the state of Cal, we will have to report to the state of California how we are doing with our attendance. I'm, I'm happy to announce that for month two, first place went to Rosemead High School with ninety-six point zero nine percent, second place went to ninety-five point eight-three percent, Arroyo High School, third place, El Monte High School with ninety-five point forty-four percent, uh, fourth place, South El Monte High School with ninety-four point three-four percent, and then fifth place, Mountain View High School with ninety-three point five-four percent. It is important that we continue to keep our finger on attendance, we can have the best programs, the best professional development, the best curriculum, but if the bodies are not there, it's worthless, so we need to continue the work, and I'm gonna be talking to Dr. Edward Zuniga about launching some type of campaign come January, um, to talk about, um, attending school every day and arriving on time, which has been something that we will be working on and wanna work on, so kudos to those schools for keeping their finger on attendance and ensuring that our kids are coming to school. I challenge you guys, the other schools, to, uh, take Arroyo and High School out of the first and second places, they're always coming in first and second, which is great, but I challenge the other schools to have a little friendly, uh, challenge. Another thing is, I would like to give some kudos to, uh, really quickly, to the Vallelindo School District for their performance on their math test scores. I wanna go on record and just thank all of their board members for their leadership, and also to Superintendent Dr. Evans for being so transparent and so willing to talk about a, a topic that a lot of districts don't wanna talk about, uh, but very transparent, you know, uh, in, in that district. of districts don't want to talk about. But very transparent, you know, in that district, 50.25% of students meet or exceed in science. When it comes to mathematics, 39.9% of their students either exceed California, not either, they exceed the California test scores and they exceed the LA County. They're achieving at a pretty high level and it's pretty awesome some of the programs that she's got going over there for mathematics. And I'm hoping that she shares some of that when our district attends the KELs, which is a collaborative leadership series. This is all the local administrators to talk about the topic of mathematics that sometimes a lot of districts shy away from and don't want to talk about it. And also for their Language Arts with 50.25%. Kudos Violento School District for being one of our partners that is really achieving at a high rate. And I plan on going over there and making some visits. And to, Dr. Evans, thank you so much for communicating with us, your feeder district. And with that, that concludes my report as a school board member. We're going to move right on to the next person on the agenda who has been very patiently waiting here. But he knows about waiting because he's been around this district for close to like 20 years or something like that. Next on the agenda, we have item number D1. I'd like to call up Mr. Robert Adiyanes, the Chief Executive Officer of the LEARN program. And tell me your exact title. I call you Chief Executive, but I might have not gotten that correct. What is your official title, Mr. Robert Adiyanes?
I'm the CEO of LEARN.
CEO of LEARN. Yes, Chief Executive Official. Welcome, Mr. Adiyanes. And just for people that are listening, I know what LEARN is. I know what PREP is. I know what ASPIRE is. But tell us, what is LEARN and how is our LEARN program doing in the El Monte Union High School District? Welcome.
Sure, thank you. So, as you said, LEARN is entering its 20th year of existence. We started 20 years ago and El Monte High School in the district was actually one of our first schools. We entered the district with a GARRUP grant back then. And the feeder school to that was Columbia Elementary School, El Monte City School District, along with two other districts that we had collaborated with, with Whittier College in that effort. So, this year will be our 20th year. I know you have a board meeting on December 6th, but we're having a little, our annual community event, but it's highlighting our 20th year and the work that we've been doing in the districts that we've been working with.
Congratulations on that. I have to just interject here, you know, congratulations. I remember when you first came in and, you know, it's hard for districts to just accept somebody when we didn't know anything about you. But once you came in, I mean, the parents were sold on it. And I just want to commend you and thank you for, you know, sticking with us and not coming in for a little bit and then leaving, as many programs sometimes do. I mean, you have been here through the good times and the bad times and the funding cuts and everything. And I just want to applaud you, like, 20 years is a long time. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
No, absolutely. Yeah, we're an educational 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency and we, myself, my own background as a teacher and educator and administrator, this is the work that I continue to do for those students and families in need. So, I'm going to give you a report on what we have moving forward. I just, I do want to preface it by saying that we're, you know, coming out of COVID, being that we have a finite set of dollars, we don't, we've had some challenges during COVID, trying to keep people, especially during the, you know, the pandemic, when we weren't able to be in the classes. And it really impacted and really kind of sent us, set us back a bit in terms of the robust programming that we had, leadership changes, things like this. And so, we were really working. This year is so much better than last and last year being the first year coming out of COVID. And so, we're hoping that we can continue and building on this process and kind of rebuilding what we had prior to the pandemic. So, this is who we are in terms of what we believe in. These core values were taken from graduate work. My advisor at UCSB, Dr. Russell Rumberger, did an evaluation of all of LAUSD in the greater Southern California area and talked, looked to see what are some of the things that are, that make programs successful. And of all the stuff that, you know, I can't take credit for this, we were just the grad students, you know, just entering things into the computer. But these are the five variables that, that successful programs, regardless of what they were, it was a high school band or if it was a program that, you know, karate that they went to, whether it was with a school or not. And these, these five variables I've adopted as our core values. They're not mine. They come from Dr. Rumberger's work. But these are here that you can just see, fostering the belief that all children can learn through constant support and guidance of LEARN staff, strategic partners, children and families. A program that shows, you know, that provides quality programming through proven strategies to keep students interested in school as active learners through high school and beyond. A program that provides clearly specified benchmarks of success to achieve the highest quality of programming for students and families. Program that provides personalized caring and learning environment for students and parents and faculty to interact in. And a program that supports rigorous and meaningful instruction for all students with applicable connections to the real world. We can always remember the classes that we sat there as kids. Sometimes I wonder, when am I going to use this? You know, we want to make things that what we're doing and providing for students to make it relevant to them. We believe so strongly in this, I pass out to my staff and they sit, there's one in my briefcase there, but I have them pitted up at their desks and I make sure that they know that the staff at the school sites and that the youth leaders also have that. On our badges, our new badges this year, on the reverse side, there's abbreviated portions of these core values. So that when we go out to look at what's happening at the school sites, I literally, if I'm out there, I'll ask them, "Which one of these do you want to show me today? Pick one and show me what's happening at the school site relating to these values." And so, I let them choose and decide. So, those are what we focus our programming on. Here's our program overview. I'm providing you the numbers over the last five years from 2018 to 2023. These are the high schools that we're serving. There are all the high schools in the district. And the number below that is the total amount of funding that we were able to garner for the district, $7,554,000 during these last five years for the grants that we have written for from CDE. These are the total number of unduplicated students served and points of service. So, at Arroyo, you'll see the total unduplicated number of students that apply. The same with El Monte, LaDesma, Mountain View, Rosemead and South. And then, the number to the right is the total points of service. So, the first number is unduplicated. Those are the numbers of students served. And the second number that you see, for instance, at Arroyo, 62,382 points of service would be those, those points of service that we provided for each of those, for students that walked in, whether they came in one time, two times, three times, et cetera. So, you see the same numbers for El Monte, 80,794 points of service. LaDesma, 9,369. Mountain View, 58,388. Rosemead, 29,711. And at South, 73,380 points of service. Here's a snapshot and we'll go through the high schools, but you can just see them there. You can see for this year, this right now is our total points of service at Arroyo with the average daily attendance being shown there. And then, those are the current club and activities that are currently happening at the school site. And below that are upcoming activities in November, December. I want to come back to the family literacy. Dr. Zuniga, on your presentation on the last event, there's a lot of stuff we could be helping you with. But I think we just want to make that available. So, the upcoming events, the family literacy night, because we have funding for family literacy, college field trips and migrant ed support. Over at El Monte, you see the numbers, total points of service, average daily attendance. Those are the current clubs and activities that are operating right now. And then, below that are upcoming activities that we have moving forward. Driver's Ed, by the way, is just knocking, knocking it out of the ballpark. There's a lot of interest from students with that. And so, we provide the sit, the sit-down portion of what they do. And then, the company that we're working with provides them with $100 off if they, you know, go back to that company to get the behind-the-wheel portion. These are actual pictures of our staff, I mean, of the programs that are there. So, there's, you know, there's photography club. It's one of the students. And then, the El Monte Family Paint Night. I have to go back to the paint night. The paint night's fun. We're using coffee. We're not serving wine. But the parents really liked that. So, here's LaDesma and Mountain View again for September student attendance. So, total points of service, you'll see there, average daily attendance, the current clubs that are happening there at LaDesma, and then the upcoming clubs and activities that we're going to be seeing in November and December. At Mountain View, you see the total points of service there to date for this year. And then, average daily attendance. And you'll see the general clubs and activities that are, that are happening currently. And then, the upcoming clubs and activities that will be coming. And those, those aren't just, our activities, I should mention on the upcoming, things that we just kind of think would be a great idea. These are things that we're getting input on from parents and students about what they'd like to see at the school through our family, our student advisory council. I like that weightlifting picture there at LaDesma and the Mountain View General Tutoring. Okay, here are the numbers for Rosemead and South. We have the total numbers of service for Rosemead. You see the average daily attendance at 65. The current clubs and activities that are being currently offered right now. And we are providing some upcoming activities in November, December to get those things going and to have them move forward into the new year. The second column over at South, you'll see again, total points of service, average daily attendance, currently, current clubs and activities you see there, and the upcoming clubs and activities. You'll notice that not all of the current clubs and activities are the same. That's because no high school is the same. And so, these clubs and activities are being driven by student interest in what they'd like to have happen at their high Some photos there from our art club and our gardening club at Rosemead. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. The 20 years of service. I do want to mention real quickly, I know the, I saw the culture of family engagement. We would love to be, have, to be a part of that in the future. And with a lot of the things that we're doing right now, we do do the college visits. We take those kids. We're doing the, the activities with the essay writing and stuff like this. We've been a little slow in these last two years, just trying to get back into it. We have a staff now that are there because they want to be. It's been tough, but we've been able to kind of get people there. And we have a good staff moving forward. We do do our summer college experience on a college campus. Last year, we went to UCSB and we take 200 students, 100 boys and 100 girls on different weekends. It's really, it's probably one of the best things I think we do. It's the fun part, most fun part I have doing that. Particularly like the boys session. I think the girls are already so far ahead of the curve that they do, they, they, they connect with each other so well and communicate. And it's, it's just, you know, we have to do some catching up. But when I see our boys come and they're somewhat closed, but when they leave, they're giving each other hugs to kids from different districts that they're going with. And, and meeting them and wanting to come out of their shells, I just feel like that's the best thing that our young men are coming away with. And that just gives me a really good feeling. So, we'd like to talk about what we have, you know, for this next summer and use us, please, because we do have family literacy dollars that comes through that grant. And if there's any way that you feel that you have a particular focus, we work best when we work behind what the leadership needs. We don't want to come in and drop anything on you because you know the community best. And we're here to serve that community. So, we want to make sure that if we, if we hear from you, we'll let you know if we can do it, as long as it meets the grant mandates.
I thank you for sharing that. And you know, my wheels are turning, Dr. Zuniga. And maybe we can connect the Super PAC and some of the things that they'd like to do to connect it with Mr. Adiyanes and some of that funding to get them to do. The Super PAC is the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee. And these are key parents from all of our comprehensive high schools that meet once a month with the superintendent. And they come and they talk about their needs or things that they would like to see as a, as a family, you know, as parents in our school district. And I'm glad that today you got to see all of the comments from the feedback of the parent, the professional development conference that we had. Because there was one board meeting where I talked about, you know, it's one of those tough conversations when sometimes parents tell us the things that they would like us to improve on. But today, we want to do the balance and we also got all the positives. So, when you were reading that, I was thinking about my list that I had of all the concerns that the parents had. But then, there we had, you know, several hundred parents and I also wanted their voice to be heard. So, when I, what I'm hearing from you is you want to strengthen the family collaboration and with, with our school district and that there's funding for that. And we could do a better job of partnering up. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Mr.?
It's one of the man needs of the grant. It's something that we've done with this district in the past. But again, you know, just COVID and, you know, just new folks in place. And so, we're gonna, we, I don't doubt that we're going to get there, but I just want you all to know that, you know, use us as a resource and point us in the right direction and we'll be there to support.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, I wanted you, I wanted this presentation because we do have some new board members here, some that have come and gone. But I want them to put your face, Mr. Adiyanes's face, to the LEARN program. And you know, we call it LEARN in both districts, but for the little kids, I know it as ASPIRE. But when I come to the 9th through 12th, it's called PREP. But it's all under the LEARN umbrella. So, with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to questions or comments, Board Member Carlos Alcedo.
No questions, just, you know, congratulations on a wonderful 20 years. I've seen the company grow, the staff grow. And thank you so much for allowing that flexibility and tailoring our programs to individual needs of our, of our high schools. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks for hosting our board at your, at Clemson. That was, that was great.
It was fun.
Yeah. Thank you, Board Member Carlos Alcedo. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones.
Thank you, Mr. Adiyanes, for being here tonight and giving us an update on the PREP program and what LEARN is doing. Having seen this program grow, since its inception, it's really exciting to see that you're, not only are you still around, but that you're continuing to thrive and service our communities. I just wanted to point out one thing, as Mr. Alcedo just touched upon and you mentioned about tailoring the programs to each specific campus. I can attest to that, looking at the different offerings. And when I looked at the offerings at Mountain View, I was at a PTA meeting last month. And let me tell you how excited those parents were in that meeting when, when the parent center coordinator shared with them that there was going to be an additional Zumba class offered through, through PREP. And then, the coordinator went on to share that, once the stadium was completed, that they would probably have like a walking or jogging program as well. So, they would continue to expand the program. The parents were really excited for that. And that's something that's definitely tailored to that particular community and those parents there at Mountain View. So, I think that's, that's key, knowing that you're not just offering a blanket solution across all the campuses, but that you genuinely are listening to the needs at each campus. And having worked with some of the LEARN staff way back in the day, knowing that they take into account what students ask for, what parents ask for, you know, and if a program doesn't seem to be taking off, they tweak it and, you know, they make it work. So, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Glad to see that, that LEARN is still a part of our community. And despite the difficulties of living through COVID, that the program continues to grow again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones. Board Member, Mr. Kwet Nguyen.
First of all, thank you very much for being present at all the school campuses. And your presence is very, very critical and very necessary and have helped a lot of And your presence is very, very critical and very necessary and, and has helped a lot of students that I know. And, and thank you for that. But I have a question. You see, this Prep program, you know, on your first slide, they funded by 21st CCLC asset. What is it, uh, sir? And that's a question, that's, uh, that's the question. The second question is how you, what's the definition of point of services? I, I'm not familiar with. Could you elaborate on it?
Yeah, it, you had a question on this, this, this slide here?
Yeah, I mean, on the first slide, it say funded by 21st CCLC asset. When the program, the Prep program, expanded learning, 2023 to 20, I mean, to 24, funded by 21st CCLC asset. What asset is it?
That, that's the 21st Century Community Service, uh, Community Learning Center grant. And that comes from the California Department of Education.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where, that's the funding source. Yeah.
And, and how you define point of services, you know?
So, um, if you look at, let, let's say this slide here, uh, you'll say, um, Arroyo High School has 2,636 students. Those are the, the total number of students that we have served. But if you look at points of service, those students may have come back, you know, maybe once a week, twice a week. So we keep counting them. So every time we serve a student, whether they've come once or whether they've come 10 times, we add up all those times we've served them, and that's the total points of service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the, one of the differences between the, uh, Aspire program with kinder through eighth grade, it's a little more, I don't want to use the word restrictive, but there's, they have to stay there a longer period of time, whereas that does not work with middle school, with, uh, high school kids. They'll be like, I'm not staying, I'm out of here. You know what I mean? So you gotta have that flexibility with high school kids. And I, I see your point of service of counting them when they might be gone for a week, and then they pop back in. You know what I mean? Like an open enrollment type thing.
Right, yeah. I, I call it, um, them voting with their feet. And so they, the success of the program is really only as, as much as we can listen to them and provide what they need.
And the 21st Century Grant, just my colleague is, is new. It's a pain in the neck, uh, application that requires a bunch of data, and it's very extensive, and you have to prepare that and turn it in every, how many years?
Well, we're gonna, every five years. So that's a good point. Um, the, the, the grant, each of the schools are funded at $250,000 per year over five years. Um, the, the rules have changed with CDEs, so in the past, we've gotten grants and then they've sunsetted. And then, you know, when, when performance starts going down, then we, we apply again. And so what CDE is allowed now is that if you have a grant, you get priority points. And those priority points allow you much better chance of keeping the grant so that you can sustain those services indefinitely. Really, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's ours to lose.
Do you think that it's possible to get a, a, a copy of that so that, my colleague is a, is a financial advisor, and he advises, you know, Fortune 500 companies, and so he's the money guy. So is it possible to just see a sample of the current one that we're on right now, just for us to, uh, view one? The 21st Century Grant that you submitted for, uh, our school district, is it just our school district? Or does it cover Whittier also? I know you do multiple districts.
We do different districts, but we wrote specifically for each district, uh, as, as a need. We don't.
Can we see the one that you wrote for us? Is that possible to, to see that?
Uh, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, awesome. For me, just, uh, just thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Congratulations on the 20 years. Uh, I know I've always collaborated with you and with Brenda, and at one point, I even, I was a coach for Aspire. I love coaching the basketball teams and, you know, getting involved with all of those experiences that you give our kids. Uh, it is a quality program. Uh, I, I know probably one of the gripes that you always hear is like, my kid has been in your program all the way to six o'clock, and he's not finishing his homework. Well, I, I get it that you're not a homework completion program. I mean, that's a big part of it. Uh, I know that's the number one gripe for, for parents sometimes, because then the kids come home and they have to shower, eat dinner, and then they're still doing homework. But I get the other part of it that you also need to expose them to the, the fun stuff, you know, those other things that, uh, many of, uh, kids in brown communities don't get exposed to because of financing and because of money. And because of programs like Prep, our kids have, you know, the, the tutoring. Whereas in more affluent neighborhoods, that they might not have this program, they're able to afford kumon. They're able to afford all these extra things. And this is that money that provides that to, you know, brown and black communities, uh, it's this program. So congratulations for the 20 years and, uh, for as long as I sit on this board, and I think my colleagues feel the same way, we will continue our partnership with, with LEARN and with the El Monte Union High School District. And again, thank you very much, and thank you for waiting so patiently here, and, uh, have a great, uh, rest of the, of the night. You know what, I, I very rudely, yes, very rudely, uh, skipped, uh, several people. So Professor Stella Torres, the secret, I apologize.
No, I, very interesting, your program, really good. Uh, my youngest daughter, she worked with that program in, in the schools in, um, Pasadena, in the Washington School, and she always was very proud of this program. My, my question is, you have been with us 20 years, and did you notice any difference in the way of the students, the way that they take the program from 20 years ago to now? Uh, of course, there are difference, but the most important difference that you noticed that the students have?
Yeah.
Their attitude.
One, one point of correction, actually, uh, the city of Pasadena does have a LEARN program, but that's not us. Yeah, that's a, that's a different program. Um, yeah. So, uh, our program works, uh, over on this side of town, uh, El Monte.
Whittier.
El Monte City, Whittier. Um, and then just recently, we were now, oh, well, back, we're back in El Rancho. And we've added Pomona about a couple of years ago. Yeah, there's, there's been a change. Uh, I mean, I, it would be odd to say that there hasn't been a change. I would, I'll, I'll really just kind of revert back to what I said earlier. The biggest change has been, um, um, before and after COVID. That's been, uh, one of the things that we've instituted at the high schools is we have wellness, um, clubs. And we, we partner with a, um, a mental health agency that helps students, um, cope with what, especially last year, you know, coming out of COVID. Um, and if they notice or see anything, that we, we refer them to the, to the social workers. That's been the biggest thing. We've seen the same thing, but it plays out differently at the elementary level. They just, they just express themselves a little differently.
And did you have to, to deal with this way that they are, they are, or do you deal with the pro, with these problems that they have? Or do you let them keep on going and wait until?
We, we don't, um, we're not trained therapists, so we, we don't, um, if we notice something, you know, we, we refer resources to them. And if there's anything that's really serious, then, um, we, we do, they do, we do let them know that if we hear anything where they're just feeling that they're gonna harm themselves or that, we would have to report that.
That's really interesting. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adiyana's, but, um, one, we've got two more. Student Trustee, Sofia Hernandez.
Um, yeah, this program is very interesting. Um, I enjoyed your presentation. I don't have any questions or concerns about it. But I'm interested to see how it's continued to be carried out. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. Uh, Dr. Edward Zuniga.
No, I just, uh, we met about a week ago or so. Uh, Dr. Rivas and I had a chance to catch up with Mr. Adiyana's and not only, uh, set, you know, just the pathway for the school year, but excited to know that there's opportunities also to expand and to, uh, incorporate some of our, our family goals too, in some way or another, to support college and career. So thank you for that.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. It's always been great to partner with the district. Everyone's been so open with their communication and helpfulness. So thank you.
Yeah, and I don't know if you know this, I'm not gonna assume, but this is our new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. You've met, awesome. So Dr. Rivas, any, any words, any comments, anything you'd like to say?
No, no questions, but, uh, just very excited about the ongoing work and excited to be working with you and moving things forward. So thank you.
Right.
So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and then, thank you. If we can get a round of applause to the, for the Chief Executive Officer of LEARN.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Moving right along on the agenda, we are now on, uh, Item D, D as in David. And we are moving on to number two, update on construction projects. Uh, this will bring on, uh, our Director of, uh, Facilities and Maintenance and Transportation, Ms. Norma Macias. Welcome. Uh, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, President, but the, uh, members of the board, Dr. Zuniga and Cabinet. It is my pleasure to present this evening our, uh, current update. First, we'll begin with just a summary of the bonds that have been, um, that we have here at the district. In 2008, uh, Measure D was passed for $148 million. The last issuance was done, uh, Series E in August of 2021 for $33,496 and $496,221. Uh, we currently have a balance of $29,906,250. And the most recent bond, which was passed by the community in 2018, Measure HS, for $190 million. We've had two issuances. The latest one was Series B and also in August of 2021, uh, for $53,484,500. We currently have a balance of $66,955,585. And this is, uh, one of two pages that indicates all the projects that we have on our books now. It, uh, lists the projects as well as the various funding sources. You'll see, uh, first, the first column is our estimated budget. Uh, the second column is the dollars that have been allocated from the bond. And, uh, the third column is a funding that is provided by Fund 35. And you can see Fund 25, Fund 14, ESER and SNC. We, uh, currently have projects on the books for a total estimated, uh, budget of $258,455,441, of which $181,119,973 are allocated from the bond. The first project I'd like to talk about is, uh, the modernization that's currently taking place at South El Monte High School. If you've had an opportunity to visit, which I believe many of you have, you've been able to see various stages of some of the work that has been completed. You can see the rendering to the right is of the proposed painting. And to the left is a, an actual photograph, um, that was taken of how it's currently going. Uh, we haven't completed a painting campus-wide, but we've started that. You can also see, uh, the bottom right corner, that is, uh, one of the art classrooms, another typical classroom. And there's also an image of, uh, Building L, which is the cafeteria space that is currently under construction. This project is estimated to be completed in summer of 2024, so it's coming up very soon. The next project that I'm pleased to present is Mountain View High School Modernization. There's just a ton of work that is currently taking place there. And I, I just have to say that the site administration has been very accommodating and, and very supportive. You can see the bottom image, that's actually of their administration building. So they, they've had to relocate their offices into a bungalow, and, and they've been making do, and they haven't complained, so kudos to, to the site. But when it is completed, you'll see they're going to get new storefront. Um, the picture right just up above it is the parking lot that you see from Parkway Avenue, uh, that is getting completely redone. So when this project is done, you're gonna see a whole different facade, um, from the street. You're gonna see new landscaping, um, new, um, fencing and, uh, just a, a completely renovated, uh, site. So we're really excited about that. This project is slated to be completed in March of 2025. The next project I'm pleased to talk about is Arroyo High School Track and Field Project. The estimated completion is February 2024. They've already started working on the visitor bleachers there. This is a picture I had taken when they delivered the, uh, concession buildings. You could see them kind of far in the distance there. But both of the concession buildings have been delivered to the site, um, and they're just, uh, making progress there. This site is, is getting, uh, obviously new synthetic track and field. They're getting new home and visitor, uh, snack bars. And they're also getting new, uh, visitor bleachers, as well as new fencing and new landscape improvements. Mountain View High School Track and Field Project, there's gonna be a dramatic renovation for the site. Um, they are getting new bleachers, which have already been installed. They're in the process of doing some of the final, um, touches, like adding the ramps and the, the fencing around there. Um, the concession buildings have also been delivered to the site, uh, and they're, they're making progress. So this project is estimated to be completed mid-January of 2024. As you can see, that's around the corner. So hoping that we don't get too many rain days, as, as you know, that would impact our, our ability to, to meet that deadline. Uh, the next project that, uh, I have identified here is a project that we're preparing to get into construction, and that is the PDC Modernization. It is currently being bid. It is going to be rebranded, renamed the El Monte Union High School Family and Community Center. Uh, this is gonna be a nice facelift for that existing, um, building. It's getting a new kitchenette, new access to the restrooms. It's, it's getting new, um, uh, improvements on the elevation, new lighting. So it'll be an attractive amenity for the school district. And construction is slated to begin January of 2024. We're hoping to, uh, bring for your consideration for award, the construction contract in December. Uh, the next project is the, that we're currently bidding also, is the Gymnasium Modernization at Arroyo High School. This is a part of the bigger modernization project at Arroyo High School, but this was separated out as a separate project because we are receiving ESER funding for the HVAC. Uh, so that project is currently being installed. Most of the work, the big, biggest part of this project is the installation of the heating and cooling, uh, into the space. But we're also doing new graphics, new painting, um, and, um, that project, we're hoping, again, to bring it to you in December for a ward of contract. Another project that we are also currently bidding is the Rosemead High School Gymnasium Modernization. Just like, uh, Arroyo High School, it is a part of the bigger modernization project, but it's been separated out because of the fact that it's also receiving ESER funding, uh, so that we can install HVAC into the space. And that project is also currently being bid out, and, uh, the goal is to bring for your consideration a ward of bid in December of 2023. The next project I'm pleased to, uh, talk about is the Rosemead Adult Center. DLR Group has been working, uh, with meeting all of the, uh, answering all of the questions that were brought up from the Division of State Architects upon their first review. Their goal is to resubmit to the Division of State Architects in November 20th of 2023. And they're hoping to receive approval February of 2024. Uh, just to, to remind you, uh, of this space, it is, uh, the existing building is going to be modernized to house the Transition Center. There's gonna be an addition that is built to it, which will house, um, the adult school that is gonna service the western, um, San Gabriel Valley area. Other various smaller projects that we have, uh, in different stages of construction, as you can see, we have the greenhouses. That is the image of the greenhouse that's currently going up at, uh, South El Monte High School. Uh, one is also being installed at Arroyo High School. Uh, we are also in the process of installing these outdoor shade structures. Um, this one is over at South El Monte. Um, we've started work at Arroyo, um, in, during the Thanksgiving break, we're gonna start work at, um, Rosemead and at El Monte. And the goal is to have those, uh, installed by the end of the year. installed by the end of the year. In addition to that, the rubberized court installation that is in, we are working with our MNO Coordinator to make all the necessary improvements and order the materials to be able to install these at all the sites. In the design phase still is the Almonte High School Track and Field project. This is currently being reviewed DSA. This project will not start until after we've completed the track and field projects over at Arroyo and Mountain View High School. This project is, is simply just going to be the installation of the synthetic track and field, as they recently had a new restrooms and, and concession buildings and bleachers installed. So this will complete all of the facility improvements in their football field area. South Almonte High School Track and Field project. The plan here is to install the synthetic track and field, and they'll also get a new welcome kind of canopy and ticket booth area. This project is subject to the Army Corps of Engineer, and Mr. Elatar's been working with them to finalize the lease agreement. And it is also being reviewed by DSA. The next slide is just a summary of the ESER-funded projects that I've already mentioned to you at South Almonte, the sunshades, at Mountain View, Arroyo High School, Almonte and Rosemead. So all of the sites are getting sunshades. And you'll see the start of construction and the completion of, of construction. All of these need to be completed by the end of the year. ESER III, South Almonte, HVAC and the gym. That work has already started, but will be moving in and taking over in January as far as occupying the space. Arroyo High School, HVAC and the gym, again, January of 2024. Almonte, HVAC and gym, we're looking at starting that project in March 2024. And Rosemead, HVAC and gym, January of 2024. The next project I would like to talk to you about is in the design phase. This is the Arroyo High School Modernization project, which is going to include the construction of a new theater, music and administration building. And as you can see, there's just some nice images of what the building is going to look like, as well as the interior spaces there. The lobby, the, the main foyer for the, the theater. The theater is going to have a seating of 450 capacity. There's going to be a nice new bathroom, choir room, storage areas for those programs, as well as all of the functions of the administration, new guidance, new administration and other staff facilities. The next slide shows you images, renderings of the proposed auditorium at Arroyo High School. And below you can see an image of the bathroom interiors, as well as guidance This is currently being reviewed by the Division of State Architects, and we don't have quite yet a date of when the project will start. There are various factors that will dictate that, such as the completion of our other modernization projects. Almonte Modernization. Almonte is going to be getting an enhanced entry area. There are, as you can see down below, there's going to be a canopy with new signage, a new check-in area, and improvements in many of the older classrooms, as well as some improvements in the auditorium space. This project is also currently being reviewed by the Division of State Architects. Rosemead High School Modernization. This is the last of the modernization projects that we're currently working on. They will be getting a new enhanced entry area. As you can see, that has the proposed renderings, that's the lobby area. Below you can see proposed painting of the exterior. There, the plan is to paint all of the exterior buildings. And also refurbish one of the structures there to designate it as the Community, College and Career Facility. The auditorium is also going to be getting a bit of a facelift. And you can see a typical, typical classroom in the 90s wing. And lastly, California Air Resources Board Grant. I'll defer to Mr. Elatar so he can share some updates on this one.
So that project is under evaluation right now by the Air, California Air Resource Board. And we are going to go back in December with modification of the application. And we hope that we will end up being, getting a grant to address the issue at the South Almonte field, the flooding issues that we have there. If we're successful, we'll be getting about $8 million. Obviously, in addition to that, obviously, we're celebrating the end of completing the CARP, the CARP project, which is $9.8 million. We installed already all the storages in all the high schools. And the purchase of the vehicles and the buses and the infrastructure that we, that, that was that, was that grant.
And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Board member Carlos Alcedo?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Board member Florencio Briones?
Just two items, one, one of which I've already brought to Mr. Elatar and Dr. Zuniga's attention. I had the opportunity to visit a couple of the remodeled classrooms at South Almonte High School. And one of the things that was pointed out by a couple of the faculty members was that the newly installed light fixtures have lights that are supposed to be, you're supposed to be able to control them separately, lights that are, that point up and then point down. And right now, it looks like they're programmed to just be on and off. I think you can dim them, but you can't independently control the top or the bottom. And so the teachers did indicate that the request was to have independent control so that when you had a presentation, that you could have lighting for the classroom that didn't interfere with the, either the television or the projector screen. But right now, the way it's programmed, you, you can't. It's either on or off. So that was something that I brought to their attention. I wanted to highlight that because it was, I did see light fixtures in some of the rooms in the presentation. The other question I had is for Almonte High School, since you're getting the synthetic track and field, there's a cell tower on the track on the, what is it, the eastern end of the track? Is, is that going to be relocated? Or, or what's, what's going to happen there? Because it's like the, the boundary of the property up against the parking lot with the New Hope Church, but it's on the track.
Yeah, no, there's, go ahead, Mr. Elatar.
To answer your first question, the classroom, the lighting is going to be completed very soon. I believe it's almost about time to be completed, which would allow the, the top and the bottom lights to, to, to be able to be controlled separately.
Wonderful.
To allow the, you know, especially with projectors and so forth. So that will be completed, I believe, in November of this month. If you have any update about that?
No.
I do. The teacher, Mr. Heileman, is one of the teachers that expressed, you know, he's an art teacher, so he knows that the lights that dim up and dim down. And on October 16th, he did share that, he does share the good news too, that I thought I'd be, I'd better share some noise about something from the list that has successfully completed. I am glad to report that my lights are now fully functional with separate up and down lights, both dimmable and able to be used together or apart. I think that's a goal for every classroom because it's regarding the actual control system that needs to be exchanged. That's my understanding. It's really the system that's already equipped, but the actual lighting switch or the system needs to be changed.
Yes. So that, you know, all the classrooms will be completed in the same way.
Wonderful. So that's one less item on the punch list. So, yeah.
Okay. The second, second item, I believe that that tower is going to be there. That design did not really touch that area as, as I'm aware of, unless you have any update about that.
Okay. I, I only asked because we were, we're putting in synthetic track. And I know the last time that we did any work in that stadium, I had asked Mrs. Torres, who was principal at the time, if there were any concerns or complaints. And she indicated, no, you know, it's, it's there, but it doesn't interfere with the, with the athletic programs or any of the meets that they hosted. I just figured I'd ask because since we're replacing the track, I didn't know if that was part of the, the project or if it's going to continue to be there. So.
Yeah, I, I believe that the tower is not going to be impacted by the design that we have now.
Okay. Robin, you look like you got.
I'd like to add to that is I do believe the cell tower is past the goal area where the curve is in that, in the corner, far corner, the northeast corner of the, of the property there. I don't think it's going to, I don't think, as I recall, that it will interrupt the, the curve on that, on that turn.
Okay. Just, I would just want to make sure that we're not providing a, a facility that doesn't meet the needs. Or, you know, we go to install something and suddenly it's like, oh, there is a huge problem here. But thank you for pointing that out.
We'll confirm that. We'll update you on the memo.
Okay.
To identify that. I'm just looking at the, myself right now. No.
Yeah, that one, that's the one.
It's really close to the track. So just, that's a good question. Don't confirm that and let the board know where it's at. We could do that through Mr. Elatar's office?
Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Board member Florencio Briones. Board member Qui win?
Yeah, I have a curiosity. You know, like I say, how about the liability of those contractors once they finish a job? If we have some problem, how fast they respond to our request to fix it? Because the last time I walked with, you know, to, for, for Dando La Desma, and those thing, the licking thing, you know, it could be going on for a while. And do we have a, I know we had a legal recourse, but you know, but you know, because of PLA project, just thing going on, so and so. So I just wonder how fast we can have the response.
Well, I'm, you know, we, to, to answer this in a short way, we, we have been having a challenge with that contractor and that, that one that built the multi-purpose room in La Desma. So there are, they have been underperforming. And typically, the contractor is responsible to repair or address any issues within the first year of the completion of the project. This contractor has been challenging and being responsive. We're addressing this in a legal manner with the contractor. And in, so far, the, the project has not been formally completed. That's how we're looking into it at this point in time. So there are some challenges with this contractor of completing this project.
So you seek legal counsel to take care of it?
We have an, an attorney who is looking at the performance of this contractor. Yes.
Because, you know, we spent a lot of money, especially on the taxpayer money to hire him to do the job. And, you know, when the job is done and, you know, we're still having problem. And that's, you know, that's something we need to really look at it. And we need to have some recourse on those.
We're, we're taking a look at it. So I can assure you that we're, we're not leaving this, this issue addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to piggyback on that. So on the Friday memo, identify who that company is and what, where we're at with the legal issues. If you can write that in the memo?
Yeah, we can provide you some.
Sounds great. Board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres?
Very, very interesting and beautiful, all the modernization of our high schools. And one of the high schools that I see is the Arroyo, that has the new theater, music and administration building. Is the only, the, the only high school who has such a beautiful theater? The other high schools know? How come, I know that Yo Masura, the, the director of the band, I bet you that he's finally very happy. Is he happy with his theater? Because, oh my goodness, he's been asking for that theater for years, years. And this is very interesting, very pretty. And also, he has a, a bad, a bad, bad room interior that is really good. What about the other, the other four high schools?
Well, if you, if you recall when the bond was best in 2018, shortly after, we had meetings with stakeholders and we looked into identifying the priorities per school side by the stakeholders. And one of the, one of the highest priority for Arroyo High School is to address the challenges that they have with the, with the existing facilities. It's the largest school when it comes to population of the students, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have an auditorium or adequate spaces for the band and, and, and music and so forth. In addition to that, the administration building for Arroyo High School is limited in the space and also kind of designed almost like, look like an elementary school. So when we started doing, looking at the modernization for Arroyo High School, that item was top to address. Other schools have other needs and priorities. So for example, Almonte High School has already auditorium.
Yeah, they have totally, auditorium.
But they also have a challenge with the location, where the location of the administration building is being in the middle of the school. So the top priority for the modernization for that project is to basically create a welcome center that will include the administration in the front of the school. Rosemead High School has other priorities. We have an existing building that used to be the woodshop in the front of the school that had been underutilized or not utilized for so many years. So the idea was to build a community and parent center and, and utilize that space. So as you can see, that every school, every school site has its own priorities, its own specific needs. So that's how we approach it.
That's the way they.
With, with regard to Mountain View High School, for example, you know, we finished the cafeteria.
Yeah.
And also in South Almonte, we are upgrading the cafeteria over there as well. So we're addressing all the needs for every school.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, I believe Mr. Mazaro is happy, pleased with it.
But this Arroyo is incredible. It's really, I think that it was Mr. Yo Masura dreaming to have a, a theater like this. And also the room for his band. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Macias, Norma Macias. I just want to thank you. Thank you for, for all your work and for the presentation and Mr. Elatar's, also his work. But thank you for coming before us and taking questions from the Board of Education and questions that they have. So thank you. Just a very, very classy presentation. I like how you gave us a paper copy. And if anybody asks us questions in the community, we can show that and share that with them. So thank you. Have a good evening and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right. Moving right along, we're going to move on to consent item, Consent Agenda, E as in Elmo, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second? We, we have a first and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any comments? Mr. Carlos Alcedo?
No.
Mr. Florencio Briones?
None.
Mr. Qui win?
None.
Professor Stella Torres de Seigres?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Consent Agenda is approved 5-0. Now we're moving on to regular agenda F. Number one, consider approval to utilize piggyback. Number one, consider approval to utilize piggyback bid number twenty-three dash twenty-four dash eleven. Apple Computer Products and Services awarded to Apple Inc. for Apple product purchases as needed through June thirty of two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number two, consider approval to enter into an agreement with Teleku Construction Management to provide construction management services for the Arroyo High School Modernization Project and the Rosemead Adult Education and Transition Center Addition slash Modernization Project. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui win. Can I get a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number three, consider approval of engagement with Cabrera Capital Markets LLC for underwriting services with the Elmonte Union High School District. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, consider approval of contract service agreement between the Elmonte Union High School District and Empowerment Action Results, EAR, coaching to provide workshops for parents and staff. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number five, consider approval of agreement between the Elmonte Union High School District and surrounding entities for use of facilities. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Breones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number
Six.
Six, F six, F as in Frank, six. Consider approval of resolution number ten dash twenty-three dash twenty-four for Native American Heritage Month. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number seven, consider approval of resolution number eleven dash twenty-three dash twenty-four to recognize November two thousand twenty-three as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Qui win. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight, consider approval of district sponsorship or donation to the Elmonte, South Elmonte Emergency Resources Association, Elmonte Promise Foundation, and the Elmonte Police Officers Association to support Elmonte Union High School District families and students. On that, I'll take the lead. I would like to make a motion to provide fifteen thousand dollars to the Elmonte Emergency Resources Association that helps many of the neighboring families in our district. I would like to, on my motion, include five thousand dollars for the Elmonte Promise Foundation and five thousand dollars for the Elmonte Police Officers Association to support. That is the motion on the floor. Are there any other motions or any other comments that we'd like to be made?
Just a, a question?
Yep.
Procedural question on the description of the item, public content. It says for the Elmonte, South Elmonte Emergency Resources Association, ten thousand dollars. Question for legal counsel, do we have to amend the, the item to increase the amount to fifteen thousand?
We will have to amend.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to amend and then we'll?
I didn't, you mean to amend it, the ten thousand?
The item, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm reading it like he put it here. I think we, as a board, can determine the amount. Last time it was ten thousand, last year, this year, my motion is to do fifteen.
Well, what I'm saying, just so that it's clear, I'm not opposing, I'm just, so that it's clear. The item that's been published for at least seventy-two hours has ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
So my recommendation and legal counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Padilla, would be for you to amend the item to increase that amount from ten thousand to fifteen and get a second on the amendment, and if there's no objection, then we vote on the amended item.
Okay, all in favor, well, I will make a motion to
To amend.
Not to amend, just to get rid of it. Give me, give me some verbiage, to get rid of the, what is on there, and then to move forward with my recommendation, my new motion.
Well, we, we'll have to have the agendized item, so it would be a, an amendment of the agendized item for the new amount.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend the ten thousand dollars to ERA to fifteen thousand. Keep the five thousand for Elmonte Promise Foundation, keep the five thousand for the Elmonte Police Officers Association. Can I get a second to amend?
I will second the motion.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So then, do we have to go with the new motion now, or it's, it's implied in there?
That was the motion to amend. Now we do a motion for the approval.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve fifteen thousand dollars for the Elmonte, South Elmonte Emergency Resources Association, five thousand dollars to the Elmonte Promise Foundation, five thousand dollars to the Elmonte Police Officers Association to support Elmonte Union High School District families and students. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Zuniga, in terms of a timeline, how, how quickly can we get a check to Elmonte Promise Foundation POA? Give me a timeline.
Yeah, we will start the PO process, but we will seek letters with the donation requests from the actual organizations. We have received the foundation, Promise Foundation requests for sponsorship. Police Officers Association, I usually work with the association on getting the letter. Once I have those, I can submit them to the business office, and we can begin that process, so. Our goal is to try to get them in before the end of November, so we can have that ready to go for December.
Perfect, thank you for the answer. Moving right along, item number nine, which was F as in Frank, regular agenda. Item number nine, discuss, review, and revise Administrative Regulation and Board Policy thirty-five eleven, Energy and Waste Management, first reading eleven, one, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Altar or Dr. Zuniga? I'll defer to Mr. Altar, if you would like, want to touch on it?
It's basically, the resolution is to revise the temperature in the classrooms to be from seventy-four to seventy-two with the changes in weather pattern and the school starting sooner than before in, in August. You know, and also, we have some classrooms with older windows and we realize that the, the temperature need to be adjusted down. Right now, we actually do it case by case or classroom by classroom, but we believe that reducing the temperature, the maximum setting from seventy-four to seventy-two would address many of the issues that we, we've been facing, especially in hot days.
Okay, so are you looking for us to, to approve that, or just discuss?
It's an existing board policy, so it's a first reading of the revision.
So on that first reading, on that topic of lowering it from seventy-four to seventy-two, what do you say sometimes when I, we get calls from principals as board members, or we get calls from teachers about the thing on the wall, the thermometer on the wall, the thermostat, and it not being reflective or like, it might say that it's cool, but it's super hot inside. How do you, how do you address that?
The thermostat, like any, any thermostat for air conditioning, it measures the temperature at the spot where the thermostat is. Most, most of the classrooms, the thermostat is in a, on the side of the wall, which is further from the windows. So you can have a thermostat reading of, let's say, seventy-four degrees in one side of the room, but with a hot day, you can have the other side of the room being between eight to ten degrees higher. So the, basically, the thermostat reading is accurate, but it represents the temperature at that spot. Okay, so the solution for this is first, to reduce the, the overall temperature, maximum temperature setting. And then secondly, which we're trying to do with the modernization projects, is to also upgrade the windows and make the windows more efficient in, in reducing the, the heat coming in, so that's basically.
And, and so, is that your answer of a, you're taking it on a case by case when that comes up? Is that what you, what you meant by that, to address that stuff, or?
Well, I mean, we always have to look at it case by case, because most of the time, the air conditioning work properly and reduce the temperature, all of the air conditioning systems that we have in, in the, in the classrooms in the district is designed to reduce the temperature by about twenty-five degrees from outside. So sometimes, with the change in the, in the weather pattern in the area, the temperature outside exceed or reach hundred degrees. So the air conditioning could be working sufficient, but it cannot reduce the temperature more than twenty-five degrees. We're trying to address the issue by minimizing the loss or minimizing the heat coming in from, from the windows and also reducing the temperature setting, so it allows the air conditioning unit to be working sufficiently. In addition to that, we also try to educate staff and employees to keep their doors closed, because when they leave the door open, it's almost impossible to reduce the temperature in the classroom.
And so what have you done to ensure that doors are being kept closed?
When, from my end, when we walk, when I walk the site, I go to the principal and ask him to, to kindly discuss and ask for the classroom to be closed with the teachers.
Okay, and I'm still gonna harp on this, but even if they keep their doors closed, like, for example, I, I, I walks, I walked a school with you, and then when we were walking, you know, your assistant was like, oh, Mr. Padilla, I want to give you the history, and I said, I don't care about the history, just take me to the room, I want to feel if it's cool or if it's hot. When we did that, right, we walked the whole wing, all the rooms, we walked in, beautiful, it was nice and cool. Maybe what I should have checked was the thermostat or the thing on the wall to see that, because the last room that we visited, you know, I don't have to be an HVAC expert, I, I can feel the temperature. I said, it's hot in here. I don't care what the thing reads, case by case, I said, fix this, you know? What did we do about that room?
Yeah, so that building
Yes.
is, is run by one air conditioning unit, twenty-five ton, okay? And in the central, it's central air condition, basically. And sometimes, the classrooms that are all the way at the end of the, of the run, of the line receive less, less air than the other rooms. However, also, that classroom is also attached to a woodch- to the auto shop. So by definition, they normally have interaction between the rooms and the, and the auto shop next to it is not air conditioned. So by, because of that, that room normally is a little bit warmer than the rest of the, rest of the building. In most cases, you don't really notice it, but in some days, like it's very hot, it's noticeable. So one of the ways that we can address it, in case if that comes like that, we do have additional air conditioning portable units that we can install in, if it need, if need to.
Okay, good, I'm glad that you have a plan, though, because on those warm days, that's when we get put on blast by parents on social media. And so, you know that, I know that, the superintendent knows that, so just, you know, just take care of that, you know? Air, I get it that it gets hot, I get it all that, but, I, I mean, we've been put on blast by parents, even here in person, you know? For Mountain View High School, you know, that has left a bad taste in my mouth from years ago. I haven't forgotten, I'm sure it left a bad taste in your mouth too, so take care of those things, you know what I mean? Please do that. I don't care what the thermostat reads, like, if it's hot, like, like, I don't have to be a HVAC expert. I can, I just need to walk into the room, and if it's hot, we have to do something about it. That's not a good learning environment, and the parents and the kids will tell us, and we get those phone calls, so just take it on a case by case and then make sure that it's cool in the rooms.
We do, in, in fact, that building, the, the air con- the replacement, the, a new air conditioning was ordered a few months ago, and it's about to be installed by December.
Okay.
Because the old air conditioning is reaching the life expectancy
Right.
over fifteen years.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of, of time to get that unit here, and there is a, a major supply and demand issues with air conditioning that's happening. Normally, before, we used to order the air conditioning unit and we'd receive it the following month. Nowadays, six months to eight months, sometime ten months, a, a delay in receiving the unit. So that particular building actually has a unit ordered.
I know you ordered the whole unit, but do you ever order parts, or that's no such thing? I'm not an HVAC person, so I wouldn't know. I just know that sometimes in my day job, the, the air is not working, so I kind of, you know, put in my work order or tell them, and then they're like, oh, we're just missing this part. As soon as it comes in, boom, then the part comes in. But my thing is like, I'm sure the same part breaks down in a lot of air conditioners. So, I don't know, this is, might be too simplistic, but why don't you order extra parts? And then, when it breaks, then you already have the parts, and I get it that there's a shortage or whatever, or backlog or whatever, but, but what? Put the order in.
That could be done if you have a uniform air conditioning unit in all, all schools, the same one. But the district has an extensive, or variety of air conditioning units. In fact, we don't have so many twenty-five ton air conditioning system, other than a couple. So that if you have a air conditioning system that is universal, you can actually buy an additional unit or two and keep them in place. So you can have, you have the order, you have parts of whatever goes bad. But when you have a, a different system in every school, and every school has multi, has multi-different systems, it's almost impossible to be able to predict what the parts that need to be purchased. So it's, it's, it's kind of logistically very difficult. Okay, so just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the last, the challenges in that regard.
Okay, I, I did not know, that's why I'm asking. You know, all I do is little child welfare, that's it, you know, so, okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope, okay, so then I'll go ahead and close the, the reading at this time. Moving on to item number ten. Consider approval of ratification to the California School Employees Association, CSE eight, and its Elmonte Union High School District, chapter number eleven, unit agreement with the Elmonte Union High School District for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Qui win. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Item number eleven, consider approval of contract service agreement between the Elmonte Union High School District and Catalina Science to provide consulting and professional development services in the area of mathematics. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number G, round table enclosure of meeting. Item number one, topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. Board Member Florencio Breones?
No items tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Carlos Alcedo?
No items.
No items. Board Member Mr. Qui win?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I would like to, you know, next topic, I want to bring the, the same thing I, I requested last meeting, bring a TOSA and, you know, for math TOSA as soon as possible for, you know, for, for our math. Okay, and that's all I go, you know, because we, it urgently needed, that's what I see, you know?
Thank you, Board Member Qui win. Do you have any other communication, anything else?
And, you, you, you know, like I say, with the release, the recent release of CAS from the fetus school and also our, you know, our CAS on math, and I think, you know, we need to work hard to, to, to adjust our system, my, our system, our teaching system, math teaching system, so we can, you know, provide equality to every single student in our school district. from, you know, from all five, 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 five comprehensive high school. So it doesn't matter which school you go to, math, like I am my, I am one in one school is the same as I am one in the other school and they must have us following the same standard, not, you know, not fluctuated. So we need the math TOSA, we need to change the, you know, to adjust the system so we can provide a better, you know, learning for our student.
Okay, thank you, board member Mr. Qui Win.
Yeah, I do have an item.
Okay, back to board member Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
You know, back over the summer, I know that Qui, I think Estela was there, myself, Dr. Zuniga, we were over at Longo Toyota.
Yeah.
And they talked about their grand opening or their reconstruction or remodeling. And they talked about a very special car they had.
The Marissa.
And this past weekend, they concluded their auction. And I think the total that we're going to be splitting with El Monte City is a little over seventy five thousand. So if possible, I'd like to recognize the CEO or somebody from Longo Toyota, they didn't have to do this. But we've had a great relationship with them, whether it's the auto shop at El Monte in the years past, or, you know, the relationship we've had with them with meeting rooms and this is support they provide our community. But if possible, I'd like to get them in here and recognize them.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea.
That's a great, great, it's a great thing.
Yeah, the car was a GR Corolla and it's called the Marissa. And yes, we will be splitting the funds between El Monte Union High School District, El Monte City School District and Vision for Learning, which is another organization. And the gentleman and his name just leaves me right now, he was at the trunk retreat. Can you give me a name, Dr. Zuniga? He was there and I remember I got introduced to him and I'm just going blank on his name. But he was there and he's the one who did share exactly what board member Carlos Alcedo was saying. The the winning bid was ninety eight thousand five hundred dollars for this Marissa car. There's only so many of them that were made and the whole thing raised one hundred and fifty thousand because the auction amount was ninety eight thousand five hundred. But Longo Toyota and Toyota added more contributions to it and it came to a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. So I think it's pretty cool. I know that we had talked about, like the way it was written, we had said that we were going to invest some of those dollars into our career tech education program, Dr. Zuniga, when I read it.
Yeah, his name is Mike Miller, that's the gentleman you're looking for, I believe.
Tell me, tell me, Mike what?
Miller, M E L O R.
Yes, Mr. Miller was there and yeah, very supportive. So yeah, absolutely, if we could go ahead and and do that, that would be awesome. Okay, great idea. Anything else, board member Carlos Alcedo?
That'll do it.
Thank you, board member Professor Stella Torres de Seckres.
Yes, I would like to 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 know if it's possible to get a recognition to Vialindo and it's a hundred and sixty anniversary. And we can take a recognition for them. I understand that Mr. Qui is going and myself too. I don't know, Carlos, or you you work at that time.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's definitely doable, not only recognizing them for their their anniversary, but also recognizing them for their great achievement. I mean, it's what they did is is phenomenal and it should be applauded and absolutely. So I'm not sure if I can make it, but if I'm not there, Vice President, Professor Stella Torres de Seckres can represent me or you can duly, board member Qui Win.
Yeah, I certainly am, I put on my schedule already, you know, during the children parade, I had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Evans and their board member and and, you know, it's a wonderful experience sharing each other view about education. And, you know, they're very receptive and they're very welcoming and, you know, you can come into our district anytime we open your, our door to you. So, you know, I certainly will be attending.
Okay, awesome.
We'll create a, we'll provide a special plaque if it's okay with the board, a nice plaque.
Yeah, nice plaque would even be better than the certificate.
Yeah, it'd be a nice gesture and be up for the board.
I mean, it's a hundred and six years. Yeah, definitely, definitely. Anything else, Professor Stella Torres de Seckres? Okay, and for me, I don't have, I don't have any items. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and move on to.
I have a few, just a couple things.
I apologize.
If I can cover.
Thank you for reminding me.
Just actually one, just a reminder, we we're still in need of two citizens oversight committee members.
Yes.
We had our meeting last week, I believe, Michelle Latar. We were to hold a COC meeting with the new members that were aboard. But if possible, if you have any additional names we're looking for, I think so one alternative, but also the tax individual representative and I'm sure the parent did apply for that or not.
So specifically, one of those recommendations of the names we bring has to be a tax person, the other person can be just a regular resident, correct?
It could be a a community member, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Just clarification and I got this clarification from the bond, bond council.
Yeah.
He indicated that anyone, any member can be bona fide tax member if they apply for a tax.
Association, like an association.
So we would like to get names and candidates and we can actually talk to these candidates and see if they are interested in applying for 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 the tax organization.
Yeah, so there's no deadline, we are able to hold, but if somebody is missing or two people don't come, then that's when we get ourselves into a situation where we can't really take any action. We can hold the meeting, but without any action.
Right, and and then just to be clear, I remember at one time we would always have a hard time getting a quorum because the the amount of members was was so high and that was a learning experience that we had. What is the total number of of members of the COC that according to the the bylaws, it should be comprised of, total number?
Yeah, the minimum number has to be seven, so we have seven members and two alternates.
Okay, so the the two people that we need, are those alternates or are they part of the seven?
No, the the alternates are additional and they basically allow us to to have quorum whenever we don't have a sufficient.
Got it, but my question is, the two that we're needing is not the two alternates, it's part of the seven.
The tax bona fide, right?
The tax bona fide is one of the.
Of the seven?
Seven, yes.
The other is the alternate.
The other is an alternate.
Okay, so we're short one person in order to have a full committee of citizens oversight committee.
Yes, but the the bond council indicated that we still can conduct the meetings as long as we're doing all the efforts to identify.
Right, document that we're doing due diligence, right. No, and I say that, remember, there's always a gentleman who goes around looking at citizens oversight committee in California and then to school districts, I mean, we all know that.
Yes, we're, that's why we're as, we're seeking to have the right.
Makeup.
Makeup of the.
Got it, okay, and then, thank you, yes, thank you, Mr. Well, Latar, I appreciate all the work that you and Ms. Norma Macias do there. Student trustee Hernandez, please, you know, Mr. Padilla has so rudely forgotten, so Mr. Padilla is getting old and it's kind of late, so say, Mr. Padilla, you're forgetting me, okay, just speak up, okay? You're Roseme Panther, you could check me.
The one thing that I would like to bring forward for next meeting, I know you, Mr. Padilla, had asked our SAC students to ask about their parents' input. So regarding district, anything, so I would like to continue that. I will be, our SAC meeting is in the next two weeks, so I'll be reporting that out at our next meeting. But I would like to continue that discussion, I think that's very important.
Absolutely, thank you, I'm glad that you reminded me, I had forgotten, I know when you were talking earlier, I'm like, I'm going to tell her, like, hey, don't forget, we have homework, they have homework to come. So hold them accountable, okay, because otherwise we won't have input, the representation from the school. One thing before I forget, Dr. Zuniga, can you share all of the feedback that you got, the good, the bad, the ugly, everything that you got from the career? I know you just gave us a glimpse, but can you share that with the board? But then can you also share it with our student trustee for her to also share with her, you know, representatives so that we're all, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to isolate in a, in a side of like, oh, the PAC, Super PAC over here, I I want everybody to make the connection that we're all working towards the same thing, which is to empower students, to empower our parents, to empower teachers, like, we're all heading, we're all getting on the same ship because we want to go to the same destination, which is student success, you know. So I know that when we had that, the the student trustee meeting, the the student advisory committee meeting, it's a little awkward when Mr. Padilla comes with all the negative stuff, right? But then it's equally important to come with all the positives like the parents gave us at the at the professional development training that we had for parents, we need to hear that side too. Not just always the bad stuff, but, you know, it takes ten positives to outdo one negative. We need to talk about those positive things that we do in this district. And today was a great example of that when we're working with our community partners, whether it's the chief, whether it's the president of the Police Officers Association, whether it's our Senator Susan Rubio coming to the parade and all these wonderful things today was actually an amazing meeting, we heard from Mr. Salcido, we've heard from Mr. Breones, we heard from Professor Stella Torres de Seckres, we've heard, you know, from board member Qui Win, from Mr. Padilla. We all must divide the work, no one person can do it all. And so this is the time that we tell our constituents, look, we got some great stuff going on here and we must talk about those things because, yes, we'll we'll read about it in the memo, but it's only us five that read it, you know, or six. We need to tell the community. And I know that Dr. Edward Zuniga does an amazing job when he does his message from the superintendent on you know, electronically and we we do it with our partner, our public relations person and going blank on their name right now. VMA, VMA, right? But, you know, sometimes people are saturated with technology, I'm sure you are too, I'm like, oh my God, a hundred and some emails, like, oh, no, forget that. So we need to do it in in different formats, you know, talking about it, pictures, like today, Director Norma Macias came with pictures, pictures of these buildings, a picture is worth a thousand words, you know, like, I'm like, wow, El Monte High School, that's an awesome field, Roseme High School, people want to see like pictures or videos. And the more that we put it out there, the the best it is that we are doing some amazing things here. You know, do we have some compelling conversations and have uncomfortable moments? And, you know, I heard the police president Rainier say, you know, we don't always agree on everything. I kind of chuckled like, oh, you must not watch some of our board meetings because we don't always agree on everything. But that that's what a board should do, you shouldn't just rubber stamp and just move things forward. There should be like discussion, like in a regular household, you don't always agree and it's okay for people to see that you're not always going to agree. Because otherwise what happens is like, oh, everybody smiles and we think everything's hunky dory and sometimes it's not. And and sometimes we do have to be vulnerable as a school district because when we're vulnerable and we put stuff out there that's not going well, people will have more respect for us and say, oh, yeah, he he's not afraid to to tell or, you know, Mr. Padilla is not afraid of what like the neighboring school district is going to think. I don't, I could care less what the neighboring school district thinks because I'm here to try to work and fix El Monte Union High School District and move us ahead. I don't worry about, you know, the neighboring school districts, whether it's next door, whether it's further north and what they're doing. They don't live here, you know what I mean? So let's talk about those those positive things. So I thank all of you colleagues for coming today and sharing, you know, how you do the work.
Mr. Padilla, can I have something to?
Yes, board member Qui Win, yes.
You know, for the for the communication from Dr. Zuniga, you know, and from Dr. Laura Rivas regarding those size of IM one. So, you know, I I would like, you know, Dr. Zuniga or Dr. Laura Rivas, you know, for those high school that have a high number of student, you know, in IM one, we should provide some support or relief by give, by providing extra tutor. You know, I know, you know, right now, it's a temporary, but like I say, because regarding the numbers, the size of the class is so big and we need to provide some relief or some support to those school that have that many number of student in the classroom. The the reason being is, you know, the last meeting, Dr. Zuniga wasn't wrong because he's saying sometime, you know, the size of, I mean, that for the student success, that many variable. You know, like I said, the teacher, the the teacher and the student, like one is, one at the school, you know, we visited, only have fifteen kid, they have, they have tutor. But I don't think it's effective, it's it's the one that I visited in Mount View, they have thirty five, but the highly effective teacher. But the thing is, it's not equal, it's not, you can talk about equality. We need to provide some support for those teacher that overwhelmed by the number of student, you know, beyond their control. You know, like a block schedule or what master schedule or whatever. But in meantime, we should provide some kind of support for those teacher and in those high school. And that's what I want to see.
Yeah, I would piggyback off of that and I know that you gave us the numbers and I get it that in our two schools that have a block schedule, which are Mountain View High School and South El Monte High School, some of those classrooms tend to be much bigger than our classrooms that have a traditional master schedule of on a master schedule where they have math every day. I did look to see about, you know, the thirty eight kids in IM one classes. And what Mr. Qui is saying or what I'm hearing is that I know that Dr. Edward Zuniga said that the research says that large class sizes affect elementary school age children more or class size is a bigger deal or affects children adversely or negatively in the elementary school district. But the research doesn't really show that in high schools. But our data, our specific data to the El Monte Union High School District does show us that we must make, you know, some A plus adjustments to history in math, you know, and I think we need to launch that initiative that I would like to coin as math, making A plus adjustments to history. And that is that traditionally, you know, we've had one ethnic group based on the data that has outperformed another ethnic group, that is our largest ethnic group in this district, with that being Hispanics. And we need to change that, we need to look at that data and look at those classrooms in integrated math one, which is the the first class that most of our freshman students take coming into high school unless they took IM one as eighth graders and then, you know, start off with IM two. But we are currently having a crisis in IM one. I don't know how else to say it. And so I'm very glad that there was an agenda item tonight on professional development for Ms. Catalina Science to provide consulting and professional development services in the area of mathematics. Can you tell me a little bit of of what that work is going to consist of? Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Laura Rivas or Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga? Are we going to be looking at, you know, mathematics through a a lens of, you know, access and how our current test scores or data are limiting access to our students and accessing higher level math, higher level science classes or from a equity lens and so on and so forth? Can you guys talk a little bit about that?
I could touch on it if Dr. Rivas would like to add, feel free to do so. One of the things that we did start off with is obviously the data, what the data is telling us now and where we want to be at, not only at the end of the year, but obviously in the future too. So in working with the consultant who can provide that support in structuring teams on campuses from the school administrator to the department chair to even the content specialist or even the classroom teacher, how can we work collectively in in the actual school setting? Because every school setting has different culture, correct? So in uniform sense, if we have the the principal leading, leading the charge and also supporting the department chair along with the teaching or the instructor, the the efforts are made when people are working together like an engine and it's working through. So that's some, some of the mechanisms that we feel are lacking. And if we continue to build those structures in place, then at least each school can be self efficient in improving scores through re-supporting, sometimes. Sometimes we do see the teachers where they don't meet, you know, often, or they only collaborate in certain times, and defining collaboration. Uh, but when Dr. Rivas and I met, we also shared, you know, we all, we are, we're doing some good work right now. We're working with building PLCs, you know, uh, you guys know professional learning communities, uh, for example, South Elmani High School, we are working uh, with West Ed, amongst other, other schools too, and ensuring that there is a system in place with how we lead from the principal all the way down to the classroom teacher. Uh, once we establish that culture, I think the data will continue to, uh, be addressed in, in a way that we have structures in place by having group chemistry too. Uh, and that was a goal that, in her expertise, that she can come and provide that coaching, provide that modeling in the classroom, provide the, uh, support uh, as a former, uh, leader on campus, how we can, and also math background, how she can incorporate that in each of our school administrators too. Anything else that I missed?
No, just, uh, to add a little bit more in terms of the scope, it would be a two-pronged approach that we're, um, looking at. One at, uh, working with the administrators and facilitating, um, the conversations and the dialogue, um, to support, uh, teachers in the classroom, but also then working from the classroom up, so we're, uh, working with the consultant to look at ways in which we support both from the administrator perspective, and then also from the teacher level, so we'll be looking at, um, doing top and bottom and, and coming to a, a middle ground with that, and leveraging her expertise to figure out how we do that, and working with teacher teams, but also with administrators. And then we'll be open to exploring other possibilities as, as a consultant and seeing where we can leverage, uh, some of that support, but yes.
Excellent, excellent work.
Administrator level.
So what I'm hearing is that you are going to in, uh, include the department chairs for them to come and bring their expertise to the table uh, with this consulting, I'm hearing that you're going to bring principals and vice principals, or just the principal?
Typically, we would need, uh, the principal at this point with math departments to focus on that.
And then I heard you say, uh, did you say instructional coaches?
The instructional coaches are part of that team that we're building structure on, instructional coaches.
Yeah, but specifically, my question is, where they, will, will they be in this training, yes or no?
Yes, that's part of the, part of the collective effort.
So tell me, who, what are the members, who are the members of each school that are going to come? The first one that's the most important for me is the principal, the second one that is most important for me is the, uh, the leader of the math departments. They're all gonna be coming, right?
We have different, we have different settings, for example, when you, when you have a content specialist, uh, group that meets with the director of instructional curriculum, there is a calendar set when they are meeting, but that allows us to gather all the content specialists among all the school settings uh, to work not only with Mr. McGinnis or Dr. Rivas, but also in working with Ms. Sines in the future, uh, how they can manage to identify their roles when it comes to assessment, when it comes to the actual map growth, how we incorporate that.
Content specialist, the department head?
Yes.
Okay, so you're calling it, uh, department specialist, I'm, I'm calling it the.
Content specialist.
It's the same thing, okay, I thought I was like, okay.
They have two roles, um, they, they obviously have the responsibility of the department chair that has other logistical stuff.
Right.
Operational stuff, and then you have the content specialist.
Right, but I would definitely want the department chair of the math department to be in on this training, because he's the one who's gonna tell all the new teachers, and this is what we're gonna do, and so on and so forth. So go down the line, I want to know, who are you gonna bring? The principal, the department head, or the specialist? Who else is coming to the party?
We have discussed, uh, obviously, the instructional coach, because they do, they play a, a critical role in, uh, the, having a peer support and, and having a teacher who on special assignment is supporting that. Um, with the, where the experts come from as far as the, um, the consultant, they have that math-specific background, not only as a coach, but also as a, um, a, a former leader, and also instructor too. Uh, so that'll support the instructional coaches and how to navigate that and how to support them when they don't have a math background, for example.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's one component there.
Got it, but that's still just three people, the principal, the department chair, and the instructional coach. Who else is coming from each team, or you're only bringing three people from the whole school?
No, that'll also include the department, uh, the whole department, but, you know, we, we have that leadership role, and then you have, when you roll out uh, some type of action item, it will include all the department.
Okay, so when you say the whole department, here, let me, I want to.
You're at, you're at department.
Let's go, let's go to Rosemeat High School. Okay, who's coming to get trained as part of this PD? The principal, so Sala Nitro, and then plug in names, so it'll make more sense. Sala Nitro is gonna be at that, at that training, let's talk Rosemeat only, I want to visualize it. So principal Sala Nitro is gonna be there. Any other principal who's gonna be there to get trained, uh, to get trained, or just the principal?
In most cases, it would be the assistant principal overseeing instruction and curriculum.
So that would be the API?
The API, correct.
Okay, so the principal and the API, anybody else?
Content specialist.
If I can add to, to this, um, Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, please do.
In our conversations, we're looking at working with our leadership team, and so we're, um, gonna be building out, so our first, uh, go round is gonna be with administration, right? And then we're gonna build out, as Dr. Zuniga was, um, mentioning, we don't have lists yet of who's gonna go, so part of our process in working with our site administration is gonna include those folks, but also working with site administration is who are the right people that we need to have as part of that process, so because we will have her on a consultant, uh, level, we will be adjusting and working with her to help us do needs assessment at our level two and figure out as we go through the year, who are the people, how do we modify that, so it's not, um, uh, definitive, we have all the details crafted out yet, so what Dr. Zuniga is talking about is the key.
Team for RHS, wh- what does that mean to you? Who is your leadership team? To me, it's all the principals, what is your definition of leadership?
And that's where we're gonna start with, is administration, so as Dr. Zuniga shared, the principals, uh, assistant principals that we'd be supporting that department, and then building out to instructional coaches, and then building out additionally to content specialists. So it's not, we don't have a list yet of folks that are all gonna get, uh, trained at a particular date, we're not at that stage in this planning. So we're still doing needs assessment and planning. But in concept, what Dr. Zuniga was sharing is building out the leadership and the folks that support that instruction at the site.
Okay, so on the Friday memos, can you just keep us afloat, whatever your step you're on, I, I would like to be informed and my colleagues to be informed of where are we with math? Where, where are we with this professional development? Okay, because yes, we took a lot of heat, because we did not approve a UCI contract, fully aware of that. Uh, we had a teacher here who says, what are the next steps? So, uh, somewhere in your community report to the district, talk about these next steps, so that it's crystal clear what the next steps are going to be, and there's no, oh, well, a Rosemeat's doing this, and Arroyo's doing that, uh, you know, this board made it crystal clear that we don't want schools to be off, uh, uh, operating in silos. I get it that, you know, we will meet the needs, and every school is different, I get it, but right now, we are developing the non-negotiables for an entire district, so that we can have, you know, this is the expectation at every school, if you want it, you like, add more stuff, yeah, we could do that down the line, but right now, we're defining a lot of stuff that has never been defined, a- and I'm sure that you guys will get to, you know, uh, the pacing guides and, you know, determining, uh, what will be the power standards, what are we going to agree on for the Elmani Union High School District? And that's where the content specialists and these teams are gonna be very important, but we can't have the power standards at Rosemeat and the power standards at Arroyo and the power standards at Mountview, we must have one united front on what that is, so that we are all on the same bus or the same ship, steering in the same direction. So I just want to be clear that, um, there's gotta be some uniformity in terms of what teams you're going to bring, so that, you know, some vice principal didn't get trained over here, but he did over here, but a coach got trained over here, but not over here. Again, that's what we're trying to avoid, so let's not go there again, so I want to be like crystal clear that this board says, like, we need to have, you know, the same people getting trained from each school, at each school, so that we're all on the same page. Otherwise, we're gonna have half-trained people at Rosemeat, you know, of different, of different jobs. Uh, I'm, I don't know if I'm making sense, like, yes, all the instructional coaches should be, should be in on that, I don't care, and I, and I asked you this, tell me what their area of expertise is. When I looked at the instructional coaches, correct me if I'm wrong, only one of them, uh, is an expert in math, or has a math background, or is a, uh, the degree, their degree is in math, is that correct or not? I remember reading it, from all the TOSSAs or instru- I think it was TOSSAs.
So we do have instructional coaches and then TOSSAs that serve in different roles, but um, the role of the instructional coach is to support instruction and pedagogy, so.
Which means all subjects.
Right, so it, it's, uh, not necessarily, uh, course or content-specific in terms of what qualifies them to be instructional coaches.
Right.
Uh, but yes, in terms of looking at expertise, we don't have necessarily expertise in the area of mathematics, and so that's definitely something that, uh, as we've been talking about or he, listening to the board, is with the, um, with the math TOSA providing that additional support. Um, and also doing some, uh, learning and some support of those instructional coaches through this, um, consultant to help us build out the expertise. Um, and again, the expertise is centered around how do we use, example, formative assessments, how do we, uh, do student engagement? That are not necessarily just particularly about the, uh, content standards in a particular content area, so, yeah, um, the expertise is around that area and not necessarily content-specific.
Got it, a- and I hear you, but I want to make sure that you hear us, that, I don't want to get partially trained groups of people at one school and not at the other, I, I hope that's coming through in my, I'm an English language learner, I might not be being clear, but you know what I mean, like, I want apples to apples to apples to apples, not.
So if I understand correctly, is if we're training principals, it's principals at all sites?
That's right.
If our next rollout after that is gonna be our instructional coaches, and it's instructional coaches at all sites.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, got it, okay?
I hear you.
All right, with that being said, I'll go ahead and move on to item number two. I'll turn it over to our attorney from Olivares San Madruga, Attorney Mr. Adrian De Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, reporting out of closed session, we have closed session item 2A. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for public employee discipline dismissal release, two matters, no action taken. We have item 2B, closed session item pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA, no action taken. We have closed session item 2C, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA, adult education, AE. No action taken. And finally, we have closed session item 2D, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for CSEA, Chapter 11, and no action taken. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Attorney Adrian De Leon from Olivares Madruga Law Organization. Any other comments from any board members, Board Member Carlos Alcedo? Uh, Board Member Florencio Breones?
Nothing further for me.
Uh, Board Member Quiwin?
Nothing.
Board Member Professor Stella Torres de Seiguris? Hearing none, uh, this meeting is adjourned at 9:42 PM, good night.